Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the meeting of the Select Board for October 1, 2024. So initial issue, I'd like to move that the Select Board enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategy in the case of Cecilia Ma versus Town of Brookline. We are going into executive session because to do, to, let's see, what is it? What are we saying? To discuss matters of litigation strategy in public would compromise the position of the town, and the Chair so declares that as a reason for going into executive session. The Board will reconvene in open session after our executive session is completed. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scuyck?
Aye.
Michael Salmon?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
We're coming back in five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for October 1st, 2024. To start off with any, let's see, any comments from the Select Board? John, are you raising your hand?
I'm raising my hand. I'm raising my hand. So I just want to be sure that everybody knows about three particular things that are coming up within the next week or so. One of them is the, excuse me, the Friends of Hall's Pond having their fall volunteer effort at Hall's Pond on Sunday, October 6th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And even if people are not all that experienced with, excuse me, with outdoor yard work and such, it's a great place to learn about outdoor yard work. So you don't have to be, you know, a veteran of lots of raking and hoeing and planting of bulbs and that kind of thing. You can, you can go to this Hall's Pond Sanctuary cleanup day and refresh day and learn about those things. So that's the number one thing. That's Sunday, October 6th, at 11:00 a.m. at Hall's Pond. Then there's a flu clinic at the Baker School on Wednesday, October 9th, and I would strongly advise that people check the Brookline Town website and particularly the Health Department part of the town website for all of the details about that because it does require registering in advance. But that's a flu clinic Wednesday at the Baker School, starting at 4:30 p.m. And then further down the road, but coming soon, is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and it looks like there's going to be a terrific celebration of that in Brookline. That's coming up on October 14th and 1:00 in the space sort of behind and to the side of our health building, right here on the Town Hall campus. And so, starting at 1:00 October 14th, a really good program for Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration. And I made a point of saying outdoors, but I think it's indoors and outdoors. So it'll be in the public health building, and then I think for part of it, I think they might move outside, but they know better than I do.
Paul?
Thank you, Bernard. Thank you, John, for those announcements. I want to mention again that the Comprehensive Plan process is having its public launch next week. The resulting plan will help shape the future of the town, its neighborhoods, mobility, and businesses. And we are having an official kickoff in person. There'll be a visioning workshop that the public is invited to, kind of be an open house type of format, Wednesday, October 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at 22 Tappan Street. That is in the Tappan Street Cafe of the new freshman building of the high school. And you can drop in anytime. You can come in and spend 10 minutes. You could spend the two hours if you want. We're just happy to see you come and engage in various parts of the planning process. There will also, for folks that can't attend in person, the next day, there'll be a virtual visioning workshop that will be done over Zoom. That's going to be held Thursday, October 10th, from 12:10, very specific, 12:10 to 12:50 p.m. And then there'll be some discussion after to about half past 1:00. And there's a Zoom link on the town's website to gain access to that and register. And then lastly, but not complete, there'll be an online survey that launched today, and that link is now available on the Comprehensive Plan website. The, you can submit a survey from today until the 20th, and this is for future visioning type of work. There'll be many other opportunities to engage in, in the process as we go, but it's about a two-year process. And so, that's, that's all taking place next week, and I'm hoping that the public will come on out and help shape and set the vision for the future of Brookline. It's very important.
Thank you. Mike?
Thanks, Bernard. I wanted to bring the board up to date on, and, and the town administrator up to date on discussions that I've been having as the, the remaining co-chair of the ARPA Committee. The, we've been talking with Trust Early Learning and with the Brookline Community Foundation about putting together what I hope would be a sustainable mechanism for providing affordable childcare in Brookline. That is childcare that either accepts state vouchers or accepts children who are eligible for state vouchers. We're getting, I think, fairly close to a conclusion. I have made it very clear that we need to finish this up certainly by the end of the year in order to allocate funds, and the, both of the other parties are sensitive to that. But it's hopefully coming along, and if it doesn't, then we'll need to sort of pivot and think about what else to do with those funds. And there are some thoughts that I have and that, that come out of the discussions that I have had with regard to affordable childcare that I can provide to the board if that happens.
Thank you.
John?
Say one more.
I did want to say something about Rich Kelleher. We learned of his death a week ago, but not in time for us to say anything at the time. And so, he's a former town administrator that, he was the town administrator prior to Chaz's predecessor, Mel Kleckner. Rich Kelleher was town administrator for 15 years. And those who read their emails on the town meeting member listserv were privileged to, excuse me, read many tributes to Rich from people who had experience with him back during his 15 years as town administrator. And I'm going to take advantage of one individual who wrote something. I just thought it was so eloquent. I sent him a note and said, you know, "Thank you, Ben, for the, what you wrote." I hope he doesn't mind if I just quote from it. And this is his description of Rich Kelleher. "We lost a very good man who could run a complex, neurotic, ambitious, evolving, brash town without making too many enemies but making a lot of allies and friends. Rich Kelleher spoke softly but reliably, and his silences spoke like steel. He told the truth to those who could handle it, but he didn't lie to others either." And then Ben goes on to say, "In spite of Rich being a man of power, he was good, gentle in his manner, and steadfast." And he concludes, "As they say in the faith into which Rich was born, eternal rest grant unto him and let perpetual light shine upon him. And in the faith into which I, Ben, was born, may his memory be a blessing." So I thank Ben for writing those eloquent words, and Brookline can be thankful that we had a really extraordinary person in Rich Kelleher, passed away a week ago.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to public comment. Tiffany?
Thank you for, thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Once 15 minutes has been met, there's an opportunity at the conclusion of the Select Board's business for additional comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you are welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. We did not have speakers sign up in advance. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to make a public comment? If you're online and would like to make a comment, please raise your hand using the Raise the Hand feature at this time. There are approximately 19 participants online, and no one is using the Raise the Hand feature at this time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a number of miscellaneous items. I'd like to vote items 5A through 5G in omnibus fashion. If anyone would like to pull out one of those items, let me know, and we'll discuss that separately. Okay, seeing no hands raised to pull out, out an item, I move approval of Warren, I'm sorry, approval of item, five items, 5A through 5G. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Berman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Now, can I make one comment about the, the Preservation Commission annual report? That was in the consent agenda. I just, you know, to read that report and see the amount of work that they do.
Yeah.
There's a complete list of all the actions that the Preservation Department and the Preservation Board took in order to protect our historic structures. And so, I would just encourage the public to go to the packet and, and look at the variety of activities and protections that have been done in order to oversee and maintain our historic structures. It's greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I agree. And it's a good idea to, you know, use their past historical commission report for the purpose of notifying the Select Board of what they're up to because that was very, very helpful. Okay, next, Boards and Commissions interviews. We'll start out with the Brookline Commission for the Arts. We have Melissa Ann McQuarrie.
Bernard, I apologize. I did not realize how quickly we were going to move through this first part of the agenda, so they, I don't think either of the candidates are here quite yet.
That we're moving fast.
So I asked that we might skip to the noise by law waiver and come back to the interviews when the candidates are here.
Okay. Question of approving a noise by law waiver for bonded wearing course, Hammond Street nighttime paving. Work to happen between October 1 and October 14, 2024. Do we have someone to speak on this?
We have Erin Schute, Commissioner Schute, and Amy Ingles, Transportation Administrator, online.
Good evening, Erin Schute. I'm Commissioner of Public Works, and I am glad to turn this over to Amy to explain, and I'm here for support and to answer any other questions.
Good evening, everyone. So this is some work that's supposed to be done by a contractor that's actually under contract with the town of Newton. Hammond Street in their jurisdiction is--
Could you speak more into the mic?
Oh, sure.
I'm having a little time, difficult time here.
Sorry about that. Is that better?
And louder.
Yeah, louder. It may just be my old ears, but I'm sorry.
No worries. So, yeah, I'll say what I said again. Newton, Hammond Street in Newton is, is undergoing some repaving, and they have a Newton, the city of Newton is under contract with Allstate Construction to do that paving. We're also doing some, under that, with that same contractor. And our section, just a small bit of our section of Hammond Street, right by that Newton town line. But we are looking to get a waiver for the noise by law to do this repaving at night, just because this is a very, very highly trafficked area. We think that it will be much less disruptive to have it at night rather than dealing with the, the high traffic volumes going through there. The, the decibels will be fairly, fairly mild. It's, you know, below 90 when standing on the sidewalk. We only anticipate it'll really take one night. But they are kind of, they have notified people for, for one week, I believe, sorry, for two weeks, just in case there's any kind of weather issues or any kind of problems that they run into on site.
Okay, any questions? Mike?
Just, I assume that this is similar to what's just been done on Beacon Street? Okay, good. That's a fairly quick process.
Yep.
Great.
Paul?
I'm glad Mike brought up Beacon Street. I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing on Beacon Street. It's greatly appreciated. I know that we spent quite a bit of time together working to get some more funds into the budget for maintaining our roadways, and it is a pleasure to, to see that happening. I think it shows an important investment in our community and our roadways for not only, you know, for folks that are walking and biking, but, you know, just being able to navigate the roads. It is, it's impressive to see it, and I just want to say thank you for your work on that.
Appreciate that.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions?
It is a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. There you go.
Good for Paul.
He's, he's reading the agenda. This is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing for the public comment. Any questions, comments from the audience?
There are 18 participants online. If you would like to raise your hand using the Raise the Hand feature to speak during public comment, please do so now. No one is raising their hand at this time.
Okay. I have one question. That part of Hammond Street that's in Brookline, are there any houses nearby?
There's three small residential buildings. It looks like they're very small apartment buildings. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the rest of the butters is the tennis courts and then on dumpster and then CBS.
Right, okay.
I assume they all got the notice that's in our, the public notice that's in our packet where those sent to those three apartment buildings.
Yeah, okay. Okay, seeing no comments from the audience, I hereby close the public hearing and call a vote. All in favor of the noise waiver by law for the bonded wearing course. I assume that's the description of the--
That's the part of the street. That's the, that's the stuff that's put down.
Oh, okay. On Hammond Street, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Berman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You want to go on to Warren Articles? You want to go back to the interviews?
They are not here yet, so we are still moving at an efficient pace. That being said--
Are the Warren Article petitioners available?
They're not here quite yet, so I might suggest we go to Warren Articles condition, continue.
Possible vote. Yeah, okay. Item 10 on the agenda. Warren Article 4, the acceptance of Chapter 59, Section 5 N of the General Law is allowing for the creation of a Veterans' Tax Work Off Reduction Program. We had a discussion of that last meeting, addressed a number of issues. Any further discussion? No?
It's just one--
Yeah.
I have one comment, Bernard, and I'm in fully support of this article. I just wanted to make sure that, that will capture the discussion we had last week about monitoring the availability of positions and, you know, not creating a situation where we have one protected group competing against another protected group for, for these types of, you know, opportunities.
The Select Board's report and the combined reports will mention that.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And beyond that, do we have any power to control?
You know, you, this is the, this, this, if, if it were passed, would allow you to create the program. It doesn't set the contours of the program. So obviously, we, we take that, the directive of the board very seriously when it comes to not making this a zero-sum game, so.
Okay, good. So we will structure it in such a way that it's not putting two people, two groups against each other.
Right.
Okay, unless there are any further questions, comments, I move approval of favorable action on Warren Article 4. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Berman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
I might suggest not to totally mess up your schedule, that you might take outdoor dining and the, the other questions next and then come back, since I think Chestnut Hill is going to be of interest to people, and it may be a little early. I want to make sure everyone who wants to have an opportunity to see that gets to see it.
Right.
If you want to take outdoor dining, and then however far that you want to go, until we either get interview, interviewees, Warren Article petitioners, or you feel that enough time has passed to move on Chestnut Hill? Warren Article petitioners, or you feel that enough time has passed to move on Chestnut Hill?
Now, let's go to outdoor dining.
Okay. So we went through last week, the, the proposed changes with the, the team. We made one additional change based on subsequent feedback, which I will put up on the screen just so folks can see.
It's actually two changes, right?
Right, two, two changes, you know, in one, on one page. Which is language making clear, one, that licenses are issued in the town's sole discretion. Applications can be denied for reasons including, you know, there's not enough space in the street. It would be dangerous. There'd be, you know, there's storm drain there that can't be blocked. You know, any, 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 any appropriate reason to deny a license. We just want to make explicit that that's there so that there's no thought this could be, you know, as a guarantee. And then making clear the new, new applications will be reviewed on a first come, first served basis by the select board licensing panel once all departmental sign offs are achieved and maybe subject to additional review as all things approved by the panel are by the select board. So those are the two changes made in response to feedback. Otherwise, the document is as it was.
Okay. I have one question. The outdoor dining season is April 1st through November, I guess November 1st.
Correct.
But we start putting out the Jersey barriers on April 1st.
Correct.
Is there any way that that could be before the start of the season?
We, we, we talked about this with DPW and the concern we continue to have is with winter. You know, we've been very fortunate these last few years. We may not be fortunate again and we really want to be. The other thing is, it's not just the winter. It's not just, oh, there might be snowpack on the ground April 1st. That's not always the case. It's more like, what's the backlog of work that DPW has at the end of the season, at the end of the winter season? Because as soon as they are capable of going out on the road and doing emergency repair work and so forth, that's what they're doing. So they have a, they typically, at the start of spring, have a significant backlog of work to get to, which is why we want to be very clear in setting expectations to the businesses. We will make every effort to get barriers out there. We understand particularly that businesses have an interest in being open the weekend of the marathon. We don't, we can't guarantee that because we can't guarantee the weather and we can't guarantee how much work needs to be done in the aftermath of winter. So starting in April 1st, starting the barriers out April 1st was the earliest, I think. We all felt comfortable asking DPW to start that process, given how much backlog they typically have once spring gets started.
Mike?
I just want to remind you of the April Fool's Day blizzard in the early 90s.
I was here, I remember.
Which had dumped, I think, 12 or 15 inches on April 1st at the Brookline. You know, two days later it was done.
Could happen again, but, you know, then again, it's not guaranteed.
Yep, not guaranteed to happen, but certainly not guaranteed not to happen.
37 inches on Concord, Massachusetts. My dog disappeared into the snow.
Okay, Paul, you have.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank Chaz for adding these two provisions. And specifically the one that allows the town to, at its discretion, make a determination as to whether it should allocate areas of the public way for outdoor dining. You know, we, we could see this potentially becoming very, very popular. And we're, could get into a situation where we're converting the public way, which includes parking and walkways into dining space. And we, I just think it's really important that we have the ability to throttle that if we need to. Very much in line with what we talked about last week. Where, you know, depending on the priority within the area and what we're seeing for, for parking demand and, and, you know, biking and stuff, we may want to be very careful about having precious space automatically taken up by, by outdoor dining, which I support outdoor dining. I think it's very beneficial to the neighborhoods, but we need to be able to control it and not be accused of, you know, picking winners and losers on outdoor dining.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we're moving along a little too fast here.
You do, you do need to vote to approve these.
I know.
It's okay.
You want to talk some more?
You have other things to.
I, I do have one other question. I think John brought up, and you know, I do like when we talk about these things more so. I think this is an important policy, right? Last week, I think John had mentioned, or someone had talked about the, you know, the amount of money that we're giving up on the meters. So it's like two and a half spaces, right? So that's three meters.
Yep.
Worth of, of potential revenue. And, you know, are we covering that within the licensing fee? And if not, are we making it up in other ways, like, you know, meals tax and additional demand within? I'm just curious that maybe have a little bit more meat on the bone.
So I mean, the answer is no, right? The answer is ultimately this program is a subsidy. We don't, we don't get enough, we don't get specific restaurant by restaurant information about what the meals excise tax comes in, right? The state just gives us their, the number at the end of the day and that's by design. They don't want us knowing that information.
Yeah.
But the, the theory here is that you are effectively making an investment in your businesses and your business districts such that the growth then becomes sustaining. And ultimately, you do have that interplay where you have a vibrant commercial neighborhood, you have tenants in. And eventually, that balance between the excise tax, the commercial, growth and commercial usage and so forth, does balance that out. But, you know, the process here is really, you know, you're, you're trying to incentivize growth. And so in that way, there is a subsidy here and we just want to be mindful of that, which is why this is a continued work in progress, right? We want to continue evaluating this to make sure that we are not, that it's, that it's, we're truly getting the benefit to it. It's not just about the money, obviously, but the money is a big part of it.
And what, can, can you remind me what the gap was between, how much are we subsidizing?
So the meters. I'm, off the top of my head, I think it's 2,600 a year for a meter.
For a year.
For a year. So you're talking about a period of eight months, nine months. You've got, you know, right, you're talking about three meters. So, you know, back of the envelope, call it, you know, roughly $6,000 to subsidize a spot in the public way. And we're charging $500 for repeats, a thousand for new. So it's a significant subsidy on that.
A lot of money.
But, but again, you have to factor that, again, meals tax, you know, the revenues there and so forth, which are harder to calculate. But also recall, even at the level that you were operating at before, you were still subsidizing these, these spots, right? It was less, but it was still a subsidy. If you want to, if you want to treat it as though it was around $6,000, you were still only charging, you know, 3,000, you know, 4,000. It was going up to that level. But you would also see the downfall and the fact that other communities have made the determination to subsidize it. You know, other communities are making the same kind of calculation that you are, you know, that still had, still do outdoor dining, which is, the value is, the, the value in increased traffic and increased use of commercial space, especially in the aftermath of the pandemic, is worth trying to subsidize this for the present term while we figure out, you know.
So that's just, I just want to make sure I understand, just from the, the numbers standpoint. Are you saying on average, we would be subsidizing 6,000 per restaurant for outdoor dining if they're in, in the metered spaces?
It would be right, it would be closer to 5,000, just, but again, that's not, it's not apples to apples.
I understand, I'm just trying to get a ball, I'm just trying.
It would be less than 5,000. You're, you're talking, you know, you, it's definitely a subsidy. But again, and you're not factoring in labor, you're not factoring in some of these other things. So that costs can go up based on, for example, DPW overtime. Costs can go down based on, you know, what we're, what we're seeing in terms of the delta and the excise tax. Sorry, the meals tax.
Good, Mike?
I'm, I'm a little surprised by the meter yield of $2,600 a year. Is that, am I correct?
I'm, I'm, let me pull my numbers before I.
Because that seems like a very low number to me. We have about, we have about 2,000 meters.
Right.
And so that would be $520,000 a year with a revenue.
Ordinarily, I would have my cell phone on me, but of course.
Or am I missing a zero here?
But I'm pulling this up.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing a zero. That's, that sounds much more like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, my apologies.
No, it's okay. And again, I will get you the exact number. I apologize. This is off the top of my.
Oh, it's all right, yeah, it's just that 2,600, just like.
John?
I wouldn't bother to pursue this point, but we do have time to. It's an important topic. Because I, I still, I don't hear in, in the description that you just laid out of why, you know, how you made that calculation. I don't hear accounted for the possibility that the car that would have parked at that meter simply parks at a meter that otherwise would have been empty further away from the restaurant.
That's right. So again, you, you're, you're talking about, that's why it's difficult to really lay out, you know, the, the, the lost opportunity cost, right? The opportunity cost of taking those meters offline, knowing as we do that we're conducting, for example, the Coolish Corner Parking Study. We're doing these analyses of how much of our commercial parking is really used on a regular basis. So it's hard to say, yes, on average, this meter brings in X. It's possible in busy districts that meter brings in more. It's also possible in those busy districts that, you know, that meter might not be being used because either it's more, people find it more convenient to park in the parking lots or elsewhere. So it's not, it's not, it's never, it's never really, you, you need more specificity to really make an estimate of how much revenue you're giving up. You know, I think it's really what I would say from a, from this standpoint is, you can assume that it is a subsidy. It's just not a subsidy that breaks the bank. We have been subsidizing this program already and we have been for several years. We have also not been taking, we have not been realizing the revenue from this program. We've been treating it as a pilot. So this, the revenue from this program does not go back into the, the operating budgets of the departments that run it. Goes into free cash. We've never budgeted for it. And that was intentional because.
But that means it's funding something.
Yeah, the only.
It is funding something.
Yeah, no, but I mean, it's, it's not funding something in the operating budget, is what I'm saying. It is contributing to free cash, but, so.
Paul, again?
Yeah, yeah, again, yeah, yep, I'm gonna, we have time, so we might just spend a little bit more time on getting this.
No, get it, have it.
But the.
Not wasted.
So just if I understand, so let's assume that 30 meter, 30 restaurants would take up three spaces. So you're talking 150,000 in meter revenue.
Potentially.
Right.
But again, we would, if we were, if we were, you know, that's the other thing is that we've had data now from, you know, what we can expect in terms of meter revenue during the pandemic, during the period when this has been in operation for a couple of years. And now, it's still not enough that I think you can make a definitive trend line out of it. But we haven't seen, you know, meter revenue is increasing and meter revenue has increased due to the raise in rates, which is good and important. But it hasn't, it hasn't, the, the falloff hasn't been such that we have felt like it's, it's caused a dramatic dent in meter revenues. We need to look at meter revenues this coming fiscal year because we're concerned now that there may be a plateau. But we don't think it's due to outdoor dining.
Okay. Ready to vote? Okay, I move approval of the proposed amendments to the Outdoor Dining Program Regulations and Guidelines as presented by the administrator and as shown in our packet. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Michael Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Perelman.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. What, what should we do next? How about the committee of seven?
Committee of seven, and then you may have some interviewees.
So question of appointing David Pearlman as the select board representative and chair of the committee of seven for public, for the Public Safety Building's front entrance lobby feasibility study. Thank you, David, for agreeing to serve on this committee. It's an important committee. It's not going to take up a huge amount of time, but what time you do spend on it is valuable. So any discussion?
I just think the folks should know.
What is the project?
The project, the project is, so the Public Safety Building, which was renovated, fully redone in 2000, its lobby has some identified limitations, notably ingress and egress and the, the ability to have kind of space, you know, space for confidential interviews of victims and, you know, places for people to sit and so forth. It's, it needs to be reevaluated and we need to look at what we can do within the scope of the budget, the capital budget we have to improve it. And so that's what the committee, this committee of seven is about. Building's about, it's going to be 25 years old next year. And so that's the, you know, it's, it's time for us to take a look at that entryway and see if there are ways we can improve it. And I think it's a priority of the police chiefs.
Okay. Any further discussions? Then I move approval of the appointment of David Pearlman to the committees for seven for Public Sa, for the Public Safety Building Front Entrance Lobby Feasibility Study. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak.
Aye.
Michael Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
David Perelman.
Aye.
Chair, chair votes aye.
Looking forward to it.
Every select board member should have an opportunity to serve on a committee of seven. You learn a lot very quickly. Okay, where are we now?
Melissa Ann McQuarrie is here. So I suggest we go to her interview for the Brookline Commission for the Arts, if you're amenable to it.
Great. Thank you. Find it on my, Brookline Commission for the Arts. Do you want to step to the podium and introduce yourself and why you would like to be on the Brookline Commission for the Arts and what you can bring to that body?
Awesome. Does this, Hubby, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, just speak into the microphone.
Well, it's so nice to meet you all. I've definitely voted for you. I've been a Brookline resident for over 10 years. I've worked in the tech field for the past 15, 20 years. I worked at companies like Adobe, Google, I've worked at Acuvia. So I have a lot of experience with sort of building bridges across the corporate world. I have a master's in fine arts from Parsons School Design and Design and Technology. And my undergrad is a BFA in general fine arts, includes an art history minor from Maryland Institute College of Art. I have, over the past year, noticed that the Beacon Street Gallery that is associated with Sanctuary has sort of fallen out of, you know, being a operable gallery. And I've reached out to them. This is a concern for me, you know, when we voted to put a medical dispensary there, part of the arrangement was to have a functioning gallery. I follow what's going on in Praise over at Harvard, which has been really wonderful. And so I was disappointed to see that the gallery had sort of closed. And I'd like to come onto the board to sort of help build that bridge. I noticed in January of 2024, there was an issue, maybe it was new management. We're not exactly quite sure why the gallery has not been in use. We know that they want to push towards supporting the Brookline Food Bank, which is great. But I sort of feel there's an opportunity where I can come in and help. You know, I feel that that gallery space was great and we really enjoyed it. It seemed to me, maybe it was too controversial for the new management. I'm making assumptions, but I think that's something I can assist with. You know, sort of figuring out why that gallery is not functioning, helping management to understand that, as far as I understood in, you know, 2019, that was a big part of, you know, the, the whole space that they set up there. So that is why I came to fill out the application. I think there's a lot I can do to sort of help figure out what's going on. Maybe we can pull in something that's more Brookline light. You know, I noticed some of the installations there were very heavy, very intense. Maybe there's an opportunity where we can use that space for a way of supporting, you know, Brookline local arts, wherever we can find that. I love, you know, a lot of the things we've done with our flags in terms of artists and their work around town. I think there's an opportunity we can help, you know, bring more families into that gallery and just do something to sort of build the bridge there. I think I can also help with the Newbury. So we know the Newbury is about to open. It's a 120 unit. It's assisted, independent and long-term memory care. So there's going to be a lot of people moving in. And I think I can also, a lot of these folks are artists, watercolors, painting. I can help to sort of unite Brookline with the new community of people. So maybe we'll have art galleries up there, but somehow, maybe, you know, we can import art from people at that place to Beacon Street. But mostly, I, I think it'd be a great opportunity to keep supporting the arts in Brookline. I think it's very important. So in addition to like grant writing and evaluation, curating, those were sort of three of the ideas I had. I noticed in, in the unitary, in, in the. I noticed in, in the Unitarian, in the Universal Church near us, they have a coffee hour and they've got a rotating gallery there. I know there's a gallery, you know, downstairs here. So I'd love to come on and, you know, sort of be of service and try to pick up that conversation. I've tried to call over at Sanctuary and be like, hey, what's up with your gallery? This was very important to us as voters, you know, five or six years ago. So we don't like to see it empty. So I think that's a place that can definitely be of service.
Thank you. Could you sort of flesh out some more, your idea of using art in general to bring parts of our community together? I mean, you, you mentioned, you know, the Newbury Elderly Housing Project. Any other ideas of using art pieces, art displays or exhibits, et cetera? For that purpose?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the great things we've seen improving, like I was just at Coolish Corner this past weekend and right next to the Simon Shoe Store, there was literally opera singers in the alley singing the most beautiful music that bring you to tears, quality music. And I, I think there's an opportunity for more of that kind of thing. I would like to see more like family and like, you know, maybe a father-son show or a mother-daughter show, like there is so much great art going on in our Brookline Elementary. I think there's a great opportunity to bring, you know, bring that art into a curated setting and be a part of the curation, help people to get their art into frames and onto the wall, you know, help to set up the stages of that. And then I, you know, I sort of think of there's new ideas coming in, helping to promote that. But mostly, you know, mostly what I'm thinking of is bringing back kind of, if it didn't work at Sanctuary, it may have been because the work was very, not controversial, but very avant-garde and unique. And maybe that was off-putting to the management. I don't know, I'm trying to figure it out as we go. But we have so many great artists here. Like, I think my favorite recent artist is John Wilson. So I often come into the lobby here just to see the beautiful sculpture. Or you'll notice that, that MFA just sent out a flyer, you know, about education and art. And on the back of that flyer is a full, that full-page drawing of John Wilson. So ways we can celebrate Brookline artists. I feel like I've always been a great supporter of Frederick Olmsted. You know, when we started designing for the web, you know, in the early two thousands, we really looked at the experienced designers, like the landscape designers, the park designers. And when I moved to Brookline, I'm like, are you kidding me? Olmsted has a National Historical Society here. And then you really see that Olmsted's impression across, across Brookline. And I'm also interested in the history of Brookline, so there may be opportunities there. You know, I've done a lot of research on Elizabeth Perkins, who is the wife of Lars Anderson, what their legacy was, how they were friends with the Olmsteds and how they were friends with the Cranes and how each of these Cranes, meaning the Crane Estate at Nipswich, and they ended up donating their land to the, to the town. You know, like there's a lot we could, we could do to kind of, you know, continue to speak on, on behalf of, you know, the beautiful history here. And then I'm really excited about the new murals. Like, so I know that Ridley School has a new mural. I'd love to be a volunteer and assist with that. So I think there's a lot of great things going on I can help to continue in.
Great. Paul?
Yep, thank you, thank you for coming forward. And I, I too was quite disappointed. And I did speak with the folks at Sanctuary about the loss of the art gallery. It won't be coming back, which is, it won't be coming back as far as I'm aware of. We'll learn from that and how we write our agreements. But I, I wanted to touch on this idea of public-private partnerships and murals. We have a number of historic murals that have been on the side of private buildings for quite some time, up in JFK Crossing, the JFK Crossing Neighborhood Association, you know, commissioned a number of murals, maybe thirty, thirty-five years ago. One of them we just lost on the side of one of the, one of the restaurants there. They painted over it. And I'm just curious about your thoughts. You brought up murals, you know, ways to better utilize private space through partnerships for art, for murals, maybe even for some rotating temporary murals that can be moved through. They add quite a bit to the community, but I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yes, I absolutely agree. I feel like I was down donating at the Goodwill over down on Harrison Avenue in Boston. And as you drive down Molina Cass, there's brand-new hotels with the most gorgeous murals I've seen in a long time. And I feel like it brightens up the community. It, it, I mean, you can see it now happening in Brookline where we've painted all of the, I think they're electrical boxes across town. And now these electrical boxes speak. They're beautiful, they catch people's attention and they're everywhere. And I feel like the way we've been doing it with the electrical boxes can continue with the wall street. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great.
You talked about Brookline light for certain exhibits. And I'm wondering if you could expound upon what you meant by that? Do you mean you'd like to see more explicit Brookline art content? Or do you mean by Brookline artists?
By Brookline artists, yeah. Because I, I think over the past five years, I've really seen, you know, artists that we see everywhere. Like though, I'm not exactly sure of her name, who she does the beautiful, like paintings of the turkeys. She's got a very distinct style and her paintings are in the Levi, you know, the smoothie shop. So I feel like people that are more kind of commonly noticed kind of represent like average Brookline. And I'm from the art community. I am not trying to diminish creativity because I've really loved every exhibit that was in the Sanctuary Gallery, the Beacon, Beacon Street Gallery. But they're also very powerful and emotional and very deep and sometimes controversial, which can be excluded, like it can be exclusive in some ways because people are afraid of it, you know? So maybe we don't have to go quite so deep, maybe we can lighten it up. You know, that's kind of what I meant by, you know, sort of bringing in, you know, schoolwork, bringing in, you know, parents and children together. I think there's a great opportunity to do that, especially with all of our elementary schools. My son has just entered into the new ninth grade building. So I've just, the eight, the eight years we've been in at Runkel, I'm just blown away. And I recently moved, so now I vote at Hayes. And the artwork in there was phenomenal, you know, just so much great work. So I think that's what I kind of meant, something that's more light and not quite so, you know, powerful.
So thank you. We will be, nice meeting you too and hearing your ideas.
So is there?
We will be making, pardon me? Yes, we'll let you know. We will be making the appointments at another meeting.
Sounds good. So nice to meet you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nicholas Chumankovich is online for Preservation Commission. If you'd like to go to his interview next. Nicholas, I'm promoting you now. And then you'll be able to start your video and then the chairman will begin your interview.
Okay, please introduce yourself and tell us why you would like to be on the Preservation Commission and what you can bring to the work of that commission.
So my name is Nicholas Chumankovich. I've lived in Brookline now close to twenty years. I have two sons in college. And I guess just as my name so evidently, so evidently shows, actually, I was born abroad. I was born in Mexico. So I do bring a bit of, I guess, international and, and other experiences. My professional experience is a, as a financial person, I worked as a portfolio management, manager for Wellington Management. I was a partner there. And my studies were economics and, and business. So, so I believe that that is, that my background actually is, 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 I wouldn't say ideally, but certainly can contribute to, to the preservation. I am interested in it, in the commission. I was talking to a member, Arisa Boit, and we were having conversations about what the, the preservation does. And, you know, again, being, I guess, twenty years or long-term resident of the town, I feel that, that I want to contribute. I just recently retired. And as it, as I find the town having an awful lot of character, I guess, historic elements to it, that I would like to get involved, preserve those and improve other things that, that I think need some work.
Great. Go ahead.
Well, Nicholas, thank you so much for applying for this position. How, have you had much opportunity to get familiar with, you know, the issues that the Preservation Commission deals with whenever they meet? And do you have a general view of whether preservation processes and laws are? When, when you, when you see that it can get down to even things such as, you know, whether a window is historically appropriate in a particular historic district? Are you comfortable with that level of detail of the work of the Preservation Commission?
So I guess I'll start off by saying, I did listen to a couple of the meetings that you've had and I did have a conversation with Elton. So, so that is to the extent, in addition to the conversations I've had with Arisa and a couple of the issues that she has mentioned. So that's, that's the extent of it. I did read the, I guess, the, the, what are they called? The Town of Brookline Preservation Commission Regulations in general and general information. I can't say that I am an expert on the, you know, the detail of windows. I'm not an architect, although I am very interested in, I guess, architecture in general. My brother-in-law is an architect in Mexico. And, but besides that, the deep, level of detail, I'm not as familiar, but I am, do want to learn, I guess. It'll be more, I'm happy to be involved at that level of detail. I do think they're important details, sorry. Go ahead.
No, excellent, thank you for that answer.
Paul?
Nicholas, thank you for coming forward. In your application, you mentioned that you'd like to see the Preservation Commission address the difficult issues of preserving our wonderful assets and character while also, you know, addressing the challenges of affordable housing. Can you speak a little bit more about that? What, you know, what you mean by that and what you think could be done?
So it is obviously an issue that, that touches, I guess, many towns. And as, I guess, as a business person, as an economist, it's a conversation that I've had very often about how best to, to do that. It's obviously a complicated process and it's, there isn't just a one answer. Like in anything in economics, you have to, you know, there's gives and takes. There's, there's, you know, compromises one needs to do. But what I found, I think, interesting is that I found that a lot of people do not have the data necessary to make possible decisions or decisions. In one of the, the meetings, I heard there was, you know, talk about a developer. And the developer said that they, that he needed to, to make this building rather large in order to make profit, but there were no data regarding that. What is the internal rate of return, for example, for that, for that building? Is that, is that adequate? So I think that there's data. We need a lot more data to start having some conversations. And I believe that that is something that I would like to push more so that we make informed decisions and not just opinions.
I guess a follow-up question, Bernard. So just to explore a little bit further, so, because you were very specific about the challenges facing, you know, the balancing preservation with affordable housing. Where, can you, can you talk about maybe how data or more information? How do you blend those two? And what are some of your ideas in order to blend those two?
Wow. So, so we'll start with affordable housing. I mean, I start with, again, going back to the data, a lot of people are pushing, you know, affordable housing. I think it is an, an interesting idea, but I'd like to see the data, who actually is living in the affordable housing that is currently available? And I have found very often in the conversations that there are people who don't necessarily need the, or, or should qualify for that, but information is an aspect where I think a lot of the, the families that could live there, they just don't have the information. So they don't know. And the people who live there are people who have access to information. So that would be one aspect that I would like to spend more time on. And again, more specific, I guess, is again, I don't have anything more, more specific on that. I have a lot of ideas. Again, it's the, it's the, it's the give and take of green spaces, which I think are important for mental health, for climate, coupled with, I guess, you know, having more in dense area and construction. So I think those are the two things that need to be explored.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, David, I mean, I'm wondering about your methodology and how you would determine whether something is worthy of preservation or not, or the official designation of being historic. So do you have a particular rubric that you would follow? Is there a checklist that you would run through? What's your philosophy on that?
It's an interesting, I haven't thought it through a hundred percent. I don't know if I lost you? No, okay. So I, I believe that, I believe that there's rules and regulations that need to be followed. I do believe in aesthetics, but that is an opinion. And, and that is the one area that I would like to, you know, spend more time on, the aesthetics behind it. Again, I think using numbers and economics are an important piece to what we're trying to accomplish. Again, just saying something should be preserved because some people like it and, and do not want to see, I guess, an evolution of, of, of the properties. So that would be, that would be what I, where I would be, where I would be focusing on is both the aesthetics, the regulation, coupled with what exactly are people really, you know, discussing?
Good. Any other questions? Thank you. We will be making appointments to the Preservation Commission at a later meeting and you'll be informed in advance.
Thank you.
Okay, those, that's the end of our interviews, given that we lost a couple. Next, Warren Article Public Hearing, is that, we ready for that?
Yes, we're juggling a couple of meetings that are happening at the same time for different petitioners. But if we can start with Warren Article Nineteen.
Okay.
The petitioners are both here. Online.
Online, okay. Didn't see them in the audience.
Michael Burstein and Scott Gladstone, I am promoting you now.
Good evening, Scott and Michael.
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Talk to us about your Warren Article.
Well, thank you, Chair Green. We do appreciate the opportunity. I first want to start by apologizing to the Select Board for not actually being there in person. Scott and I, or at least I am, in the throes of preparing for Rosh Hashanah, which starts tomorrow night. So, which is sort of relevant to the Warren Article. But basically, the Warren Article that we have filed is an attempt to take the, the Jewish American Heritage Month that is already considered a federal observance. It's part of the State Department's list of Heritage and History Months. You could find if you actually go to the State Department website. And to try to make the concept, Jewish American Heritage Month, something more of a formal observance in the town of Brookline. We basically modeled this on very similar Warren Article that Town Meeting passed two years ago, November twenty-two, about AAPI Heritage Month, which actually is the same month, it's the month of May. Also acknowledging things such as the commemoration of Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day and things like this. And we know that Scott, in the past, has gone to the Select Board every year, over a few years, and you guys have actually voted in May or before May to acknowledge Jewish American Heritage Month. But we felt that, given the current climate of antisemitism, quite frankly, that it would be a good time to highlight the positive contributions of Jewish Americans. And there's many resources out there, websites from the State Department and other places, where you can find out a lot of information and history about people like Ruth Bader Ginsburg or Albert Einstein or Jonas Salk as part of the history. You know, we feel that. uh, as part of the history. You know, we feel that uh, it would be useful for us to, to sort of put a spotlight on, on the contributions of Jewish Americans in our culture. We um, feel that, uh, you know, that we would like to see um, the schools do something perhaps, would like to see possibly some sort of, you know, perhaps some, some sort of town observance or celebration. Uh, and we can tell you that the um, again, all, all, a lot of the things that we, but in the Warren Article are things that we're already talk about doing for other, um, you know, ethnic groups. And, you know, we see this as something that's uh, has its intrinsic value, not just celebrate, and we obviously want to celebrate the unique contributions of the Jewish residents of Brookline and Jewish Americans. But we see it as part of the whole mosaic of faiths, ethnicities, and nationalities that make Brookline the community that we enjoy. So, you know, we see this as part of the uh, one piece of the larger effort uh, to educate about, embrace, and celebrate every community within Brookline. Um, and I think I will turn it over to Scott to say a few things as well, if that's okay with you.
Great, thank you. No, I think Michael um, really covered it. Um, I mean, we've heard some objections, uh, or the um, one, you know, an objection is, uh, you know, why do we need a warrant article to do this? And I think Michael uh, addressed that somewhat. Uh, we, we do have a precedent with uh, AAPI Month. And since that, it is two things. Um, both with that and this, it's an opportunity just in Town Meeting to educate people um, about Jewish American history and um, and the contributions of uh, of Jewish Americans to the um, our, our mosaic, um, that makes Brookline so vibrant. Uh, but also since the passage of that, um, there's really been a really vibrant celebration of Asian American History Month. Now, I, it was certainly driven by a core uh, organization and core people who took the reins and, and organized things. Um, but for sure, they, they had a boost and they had a legitimacy when they approached um, other entities, town, uh, the town branches of town government. Um, because they, you know, they had the premature of a, of, you know, resolution declaring it as a policy of the town. Um, it, it just gave a legitimacy that I think is going to be very helpful. There was some, there was a issue raised about, well, it's a religion, and so are we putting um, you know, the, the town's uh, um, resources behind promoting a religion? And the interesting thing about that is that that objection, and I'm, I don't want to highlight where that came from, uh, it really um, speaks to why Jewish American Heritage Month is really, really useful. Because the fact is that Jewish Americans are identified as Jewish Americans, not because they necessarily just have a religion, uh, that's Judaism. Most of, many of the people that um, uh, in one of the links that Michael um, came up with, it provided that uh, held up famous Jewish Americans who made significant contributions are, are certainly either totally not observ, religiously observant. Um, or, well, famously, um, one baseball player was one-time religiously observant, or, or could be atheist. Um, because it's not, um, you know, it's sort of a, it's a Christian, maybe even a Muslim um, conception of religion that you have to have the faith in order to be considered a member of, uh, of that group. Uh, that's not true of Judaism and Judaism in America. It's, it's a ethno uh, religion. Um, you know, American culture has absorbed a great deal of Ashkenazi Jewish culture, and in some parts of the country, um, Ladino Jewish culture, and Mizrahi, which is, you know, Arab Jewish culture. And um, you know, that's, again, that all contributes to the, the uh, the mosaic. It's also, you know, it's a culture with unique languages. Yiddish, Ladino, Judeo-Arabic, uh, I, I keep learning of more and more. It's, it is a people, it is a culture, uh, that happens to also have a religion that's connected to it. So there's lots to learn. There's lots that Jewish people have to learn. There's lots that non-Jewish people have to learn. And the more learning, the less misunderstanding, and the more uh, possibility that we will be a bulwark against intolerance, uh, hate, uh, and antisemitism. And the more we educate about all the groups that make Brookline so terrific, uh, the more we'll be a bulwark against hate just generally. And this is just one piece of that tapestry.
Thank you. Any discussion? Um, Mike?
So I appreciate the comment that, uh, while we already have a proclamation in May, in fact, I read that proclamation at the Select Board meeting. It was passed it. And so, I mean, the first question that I have is, well, we already did this, why do we need a resolution? And I guess the question is, what will change? Uh, if there's a resolution, you referenced the um, Asian, uh, Asian American Pacific Islanders recognition and the activities that were driven by um, a local group of people who got together and, and provided, uh, they had, among other things, a, an essay contest, and they had a um, dance contest and so forth for the, uh, both for their own community, for the, the public at large, and they were both very successful. Um, and Juneteenth is another example of uh, people getting organized. My question is, do you expect that same thing from um, the, is, is that what you're planning in, in to, to do um, in the uh, in and with members of the Jewish community? If so, what changes with the resolution? What does it bring that um, isn't there now?
So the, the first thing that the resolution would do is actually bring more attention to it and give us the opportunity to say it's not just the Select Board, the five of you, you know, making a statement. Uh, it brings it to, I, I would say, the same level as our AAPI Month observance, which, as you remember, we, we did do that for, you know, some time before, and I think the Select Board had declared it before. Uh, but there came a point when the API community felt it was important to have a full townwide resolution. Um, our feeling is that if we have uh, the, you know, Town Meeting voted, that also allows us, as, as I note in uh, the resolution, uh, very similar to what might hap, you know, what happens with the API Month. Um, I'm hoping that there would be an ability to establish a possible Jewish American Heritage Month Celebration Committee. So we'd be able to actually have a, you know, a town committee that we would have, you know, town volunteers work on to try to figure out exactly what the sort of kind of celebration would be. In addition, I have to say that we want this resolution to help stress some of the education in a way that we, we frankly do hope that, that the schools will embrace. Um, at the Subcommittee Hearing for the Advisory Committee, we heard from two eighth graders at the Florida Riffin Ridley, I'm sorry, Florida Ruffin Ridley School. My apologies. I, I was tongue-tied there. Um, and, and these two girls from the Ridley School told us something very interesting that they, uh, that they brought to the school, to their class at, at, at Observance of Jewish American Heritage Month. That apparently, uh, from what I gather, and I don't have all the facts necessarily, but it sounded like there wasn't necessarily a lot being planned. And these two students asked their teacher, could we bring something? And, and the teacher said yes. And the students then put together a presentation about Jewish Americans, famous Jewish Americans in history. And while I think I, I admire our students in Brookline, and I think that's, shows great initiative, it also seems to me that there was a piece missing there. It's like, well, why wasn't the school already saying, okay, we're going to, you know, make sure to spend some time talking about this? In addition, um, one of the problems, and then these three students mentioned that, that a lot of, when you talk about, well, what are we going to do talking about teaching Jewish history, Jewish culture? It often goes back to the Holocaust. It's like, oh, we're going to teach about the Holocaust. Everybody knows about this horrible thing that happened. And while, you know, Scott and I agree that, and I think, and the state of Massachusetts too, through a, a vote, agrees that Holocaust education is vital. Um, it, it does get tiresome for our community to always be defined by that one horrific event, when we've got so many wonderful things that we can illustrate. And again, as I said, talk about the contributions uh, that Jewish Americans have made uh, to uh, American society as a whole. So I, I hope that answers your question, Mr. Sandman. You know, it, it's, the, the idea is that the Warren Article, we think, will actually do more simply by being there and bringing the spotlight that, that Scott and I feel is desperately needed.
I, I think that um, that last, uh, the last comment about celebrate, celebrating more than a disaster, um, more than the Holocaust is a very apt one. I appreciate that. Uh, the, the only concern that I have in mentioning the schools is, I, I mean, we don't have control of what the school committee does. So I want you to make sure that you understand that, and I'm sure that.
We, we, we understand that, and we know that the school committee is, yeah, has decided not to take a position on this. And we're not, we're not attempting to pressure the schools. But um, again, we think if the town, we think if the town passes, you know, Town Meeting passes resolution, one thing that I personally will do, I, in my life, I have been a teacher. I, I am actually currently, I, I actually, you know, uh, at an editorial manager um, at an educational uh, technology and publishing company. One of the things I plan to do is um, provide basically a, a curriculum that could be taught in either one period, or one day, or one week, uh, that could be adapted into uh, into the month of May at some point for Jewish American Heritage Month, and can be cross-curricular, you know? So we're not just talking history, but we know, you could put something in science and English literature simply by looking at the contributions of Jewish Americans. So my goal is that if, with this warrant article is passed, uh, it would be that I can bring this to the school committee and say, hey, here's resources, and pass this along, you know, bring this to pretend that you can pass this along to all your teachers. It's all built in. It's, it's, it would be a turnkey situation.
Oh, did you have your end? Yep, I did. Thank you. Um, and first, I want to thank you for bringing this article. Uh, I think it's, uh, it's very timely. Uh, and frankly, I think it's quite needed in our community. I guess, I, you know, I have a, a question. Maybe Chaz might be able to help me with this, or maybe you two would know the answer. Uh, I'm looking specifically at, at, at the resolution, now therefore, what we would do. Uh, the Select Board would establish the celebration of the Jewish Heritage Month event. Um, do we do that for the AAPI, or is that, is that done with partnerships?
We do that in partnership with community groups.
We do. Okay, so um, I, I guess I'm, I'm going to ask you guys, um, Michael and Scott, do you anticipate community group coming forward? Uh, you know, to assist and help with this, uh, this type of activity? Um, if we're going to put on, you know, a, a celebration, or maybe a specific event to help coordinate this, or would you be anticipating it's all going to be relied on by staff?
Well, first of all, yeah, it's not going to be relied on by staff at all. We do anticipate um, having a, some group or, or multiple groups in Brookline. Um, you know, I will admit that to some extent, part of it, you know, might be some of the synagogues being involved with us. But there are also many people in Brookline who are part of uh, Jewish organizations that are not tied into the religion group. We have, uh, in Brookline, uh, for example, the head of CJP lives in Brookline. Um, CJP is the Combined Jewish Philanthropies, which is not a religious organization. Uh, we, we, I think we will soon have an Associate Director of the American Jewish Committee, uh, living in Brookline. Um, we anticipate that.
That's a disclaimer I should make, actually.
Yes, um, that, 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 um, that will be Scott, I think. Um, but the, the key thing is that once we have the Warren Article, and we've already spoken to members of the Jewish community uh, who are enthusiastic about this, but uh, our, our, what we expect is that the Warren Article will actually uh, energize the group of people. And honestly, I am hoping, you know, if, if we do form a celebration committee that is a town committee, uh, I would be more than happy to be on it or possibly even chair it, although I don't want to make this about me. Uh, but the idea is that we would group, we would partner with an organization, just like, again, the, the town does this with the AAPI. Because, you know, that language, I believe, I, I think it's almost exactly verbatim what the town does with the AAPI. Same thing with like, point number three, when we talk about adequate funding. Um, you know, and the question, I, that actually question came up at the Subcommittee, you know, about the Select Board offering adequate funding. And I said, that language actually came directly out of the API warrant article. So we know there already is precedent for the town to do this sort of thing. But yes, the, the short answer to your question is that, no, we're not depending on the town or town staff to do this entire thing.
Okay, thank you.
So um, let me preface what I'm about to say by saying I support this Warren Article. I think it's a good idea. Uh, I disagree with um, my colleague here, that um, it's important because it's timely. I, I think we want to make sure that uh, not just this committee, uh, this initiative, but all the committees that we have rep, uh, celebrating uh, different ethnic and, and other groups. Sort of step outside of, you know, current situations that may be facing those groups. Uh, that's very important because we want to have these committees uh, designed to bring people together, not find, you know, ways in which, you know, we, we can be um, sort of at odds with each other. And I guess, I think you answered this question, but uh, the question is um, the relationship between the committee you're proposing and the town. And I think, you know, Chad's answered that, but that is a, that is a critical piece. Uh, we want to make sure, and this is not just an issue that's come up in connection with the Jewish American Heritage Warren Article, but we want to make sure that, you know, our committees don't go off on um, tangents that are not consistent with the town's needs and um, you know, the town as a whole. And, and all of its different uh, individuals and, and groups.
So, so my, my, I should react to that. Uh, one, the, unfortunately, the, the anti-Asian hate and antisemitism are the gifts that keep on giving. These are evergreen problems that, you know, that spike and have lulls depending on what's going on in the world. But um, the, the time to be working on them is when there's not a crisis. And um, education is the key. And uh, I think that's, that's what we're proposing. The other thing is that um, uh, is with all communities, the American Jewish community and the, and the American Jewish community in Brookline are not a monolith. Um, there's a, a lot of different opinions. There's a lot of issues that would be uh, hot bone issues that would probably strain consensus and make it hard to work collaboratively on uh, on the kinds of things we've just been describing this evening. And we would be concentrating on the things that are uh, easier and bring people together, and probably not so much on um, on more topical events.
Uh, John?
Thank you very much for bringing this. And uh, I, I think that this actually has caused all of us to think a little bit harder about what are we doing currently and what should we be doing in the future? Either when we are presented with a request of this nature, or on our own initiative to anticipate um, requests of this nature. Because I, I, I love that we occasionally um, will do something official in the way of a proclamation by the Select Board to recognize uh, a heritage group that is um, observing a, a month, a special month. And I thank you for specifying that you, you used or turned to, you know, as kind of a guide to um, how this is done, um, the State Department's list of Heritage Months. And it caused me to immediately Google search that list. And I'm going to read back um, the, the, the months that are recognized currently by the State Department. Um, because I think it's very informative. So there's Black History Month, there's Women's History Month. And by the way, each of these is, you know, is a separate month on the calendar. Um, Arab American Heritage Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. That's the one that we had a Town Meeting Resolution um, that formalized our recognition. Uh, Military Appreciation and National Veterans and Military Families Month. Um, Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, Caribbean American Heritage Month, Immigrant Heritage Month, and World Refugee Day, and Hispanic Heritage Month. By the way, that's ten. So I think there's two, um, two months that are still available. And uh, it kind of jumped off the page uh, to me that um, not on this list is um, uh, Indigenous Americans Month, or I should say Indigenous Peoples' Month, excuse me. And I wonder if the State Department has uh, future intentions of adding that to the list. At any rate, it, it, it helps me to think about, you know, how do we receive requests of this nature? To see it in the context of, are we joining with people at the national governmental level, and I assume at the state governmental level, sort of in concert, to recognize certain very special heritage groups among the American population, and do it in a And do it in a consistent way, month after month, over the course of a year. So I, I think in, with that as the context, what has been proposed for town meeting? Sounds like something I would support. I, I think that there is going to be a little bit of question, as you've already anticipated, about how we can do that, express that support and at the same time observe the distinctions under law in terms of government, not, not, you know, sponsoring religion. I think we can, I think we can take care of that. I also think it'll be very useful to find out more about how has the, it's only been two years that we've had the recognition of AAPI month. And I think they could help us all better understand how that has worked out in practice. Because from my observation, excuse me, it's been essential that it be driven by a community group. It, it's, it's essential that it's organic to the community and, and not, oh, you know, because the State Department is recognizing this month, we put on a list of things we have to do as a select board, let's issue the proclamation. You know, it's great to be asked to issue the proclamation. It's great to have people from the community come to the meeting where the proclamation is read and say a few words themselves. So it's, it's really important that it be from the community in the future. And I also think what we would find out from the AAPI group is that, which is, which is the Brooklyn Asian Families Network, BAFA, yeah, yeah. That there has been a little bit, and I emphasize a little bit of assistance, financial assistance offered. I believe through the Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Community Relations. But I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that came from appropriated funds. Because I do know of at least one instance where there was a gesture by the Brookline Community Foundation to offer them some support. Or excuse me, there was an effort, excuse me, by another organization to offer support to purchase books for the library. And money, money did assist in that, but it, it was not money that came directly from, from town funds. So again, they can inform us on this. But having said that, I've probably spoken too long. But I, I thank you for bringing this forward and I hope people on this board and also the sponsors of this warrant article will keep into consideration all of this context that I've mentioned, because I do think it's important.
David.
I am sensing that there's a lot of support for the warrant article. Can we?
Public hearing, by the way.
That's right. All right. So we need to hear from the public first, but I'm, perhaps we can vote on this depending on what we hear.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If any, see if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on warrant article 19? If you're a participant online and would like to speak on warrant article 19, please raise your hand using the raise the hand feature. There are approximately 24 participants online and no one is raising their hand at this time.
I thought there'd be someone that would like to say something.
Chair Green, may I say one additional thing?
Of course.
I, I, at the risk of, of making Mr. Van Squake a little worried, I just want to correct one misunderstanding he had. There are 10 heritage months on the calendar, but some of them do overlap. And actually Jewish American Heritage Month overlaps with AAPI month in the month of May.
Thank you very much.
You're, you're welcome. And this was actually a question that came up of, you know, can the town handle doing like two observances at once? To which the answer is why not? I mean, it's, you know, and, and in fact, Scott and I both mentioned people that we know who are members of both the AAPI and Jewish community, who would find that very useful. But yeah, we, we hope that this does encourage other groups to come forward and, and, you know, as, you know, I will tell you, as a former chair of the library trustees and a current library trustee, you know, the library often, you know, tries to, you know, mention, have books, programs at all these different groups and different heritages. And I, I certainly hope that the town, and I hope you guys do, do embrace this concept for us and for all the different groups in the.
Michael, thank you so much for, you know, getting, giving me that information. I always try to misstate at least one thing at every meeting so that I can learn something at every meeting. So thank you.
I'll, I'll, let me pass along what Neil Gordon said he would have said if he was here. And because he chaired the AC Subcommittee, he just wanted to report that the full Subcommittee voted unanimously in support with one abstention.
That was what I was going to bring up. I have the, I have the handy chart that's been distributed by, by the Advisory Committee. I don't know if you guys have access to it, but it shows the votes of each article, the Subcommittee vote, when they're hearing it, so on and so forth. And it looks like the Subcommittee, which was Admin and Finance, voted three, zero to one. And then the AC voted 23 to zero with one abstention for favorable action.
Okay. I heard some rumblings over on the right, right-hand side of desire to vote this tonight. Do other members think that that's appropriate?
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are we awaiting some kind of, you know, a call on, on this question of whether there's any interference with the unconstitutional?
So Town Council's office sent a memo around to you this afternoon, which I think Tiffany distributed. There's no impediment here.
No impediment. All right. In, in that case, fine.
Okay, well, do you want to do a motion?
All right. I move that the Select Board recommend favorable action on warrant article 19.
Okay, on favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Squier?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
In the tradition of the Advisory Committee, I abstain.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand that.
Well, I abstain.
Okay, Paul Warren?
Aye.
Oh, David Berman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Okay. Happy New Year to everyone, whether or not it's your new year.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to you.
Thank you.
So next, warrant article five, amend the general laws to create a Brookline Youth Council. Do we have anyone?
Yes, we have the petitioners for both. I'm trying to fix this screen issue that's happening. But Jonathan Simpson is on and we could take warrant article six next.
I do see the petitioner for five is on.
Oh, petitioner for five is on now.
We don't have the screen image.
Whoops.
Do people, do people at home have access to?
Yeah, what does that mean?
People can see, we, we can't see them on the big screen here, but if you join the Zoom, I can see it on Zoom.
Okay.
Oh, we went blue.
Yeah.
So Karen Bache is on.
Okay. Karen, if you're there, please, actually, I don't see you on my screen.
I've just promoted Karen.
Okay, Karen.
Okay. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Great.
So tell us about your warrant article.
Yeah, so this is a warrant article that would create, as a border commission, a Brookline Youth Council. As we all know, Brookline is home to a pretty diverse population of young people. Over 25% of our town's population falls between 15 and 25 years old. These young people really represent the future of our community. Yet I think that they're often underrepresented in decision-making processes that directly impact their lives. You know, young people should participate in public policy at the municipal level. They should identify policy issues that concern them, build support for program, program implementation. They should know about democracy as a process in which they can engage policy as the way, as a way to achieve their goals. And the municipality is a vehicle for their actions. So the Brookline Youth Council really tries to espouse those values. It will consist of 10 members aged 14 through 24 who will be selected for three-year terms. These young leaders will really serve as representatives for their peers, contributing to discussions on, on local policies, engaging with, you know, various town, town border commissions, recommending actionable solutions to, to issues facing communities' youth. This proposal isn't unprecedented in that several other neighboring municipalities have undertaken such actions, such as Boston's Cambridge, Somerville, Newn, they've all established similar youth councils. And they've proven to be enormously effective in representing youth in government, offering, you know, fresh perspectives on, on critical issues, fostering an environment of civic engagement from an early age. They provided valuable input on education policy, mental health resources, youth programs. And they've also spearheaded community service initiatives partnered with local governments to implement change. You know, in Cambridge, for instance, the Youth Council played a pivotal role in advocating for increased mental health resources for students. A need that many youth were uniquely positioned to understand. Similarly, in Arlington, their Youth Council organized community events like planning a regional youth leadership summit, creating a youth resource guide within their town to help youth become more engaged in municipal affairs. Even as I've spent 17 years in Brookline, coming on 18, I can still recognize that Brookline has always been a town that values inclusivity and community engagement, and our youth are no exception really. You know, we have ideas, concerns, solutions that, you know, I believe deserve a seat at the table. And without a formalized structure, I think these voices of risk being overlooked in policy discussions that, that shape our town's future. Youth engagement is an inclusive, intentional, mutually respectful partnership between youth and adults where power is shared, respective contributions are valued. And young people's ideas, perspectives, skills, strengths are really integrated into, you know, the design of programs that, that affect our lives and communities. And so, you know, this Youth Council will really provide an essential platform for our youth to participate meaningfully in local governance. Allowing, allowing them to engage in, in issues like public safety, transportation, education, mental health, ensuring that policies affecting these areas are developed with their input. I think in particular, we've seen how pressing mental health challenges, you know, climate change activism, social justice movements have been led by young people across the country. And Brookline's youth, I, I strongly believe are eager to do the same for our community. You know, I think beyond just representation, I think the Youth Council offers long-term benefits by involving young people in local government now or planting the seeds for lifelong civic participation. You know, several studies show that early engagement in civic life leads to sustained involvement as adults. And, you know, today's youth will be tomorrow's leaders and, and this council will help prepare them for that role. And so, you know, just to kind of wrap it up, establishing a youth council, I don't believe is just an investment in young people. I think it's an investment in our future. And, you know, creating a formal structure for, for youth engagement, youth representation, youth participation within Brookline's government. I think we can ensure that town policies, you know, reflect the needs, concerns and ideas of all of its residents, young and old alike. And, you know, I think our neighboring towns have recognized this. And, you know, I strongly believe that Brookline should join them in, in empowering our youth to help shape our community. So thank you.
Thank you. I have one question to start off. We have a commission on diversity, equity, inclusion and community relations. Its predecessor organization was called the Community Relations and Youth, Youth Services Council, I believe. And, and the current commission has, as its mandate, addressing issues facing youth, including, including them in the membership of, of the commission. Why, why wouldn't that serve the purposes that your youth council would serve? Admitting that it's not doing so now, but, you know, could we make it serve those purposes?
I think that really having a specific council that is dedicated to youth issues. And, you know, not only that, but that is composed of, you know, 14 to 24-year-olds as its membership. You know, of course, with additional staff support. You know, I think that that is really, you know, in my view, a better message and a better way to sort of integrate youth into the process. You know, because we have, as the, the article describes, there are 10 spaces or 10, you know, seats in the commission that are really open exclusively for young people. And so I think that having a commission, you know, that's not dedicated, you know, more broadly to, to, you know, diversity within the town. But I think that is really dedicated towards, you know, youth issues, towards youth representation. I think that, you know, provides a better impetus for, for young people to want to join and want to participate in municipal government. As well as more, you know, authority when, you know, like the article mentions, you know, making recommendations to, to town meeting on, on a variety of, of issues. I think it gives that young people more authority in that process.
Paul.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you for your, your presentation. When town meeting, maybe two years ago, we took up the, the, an article that was, I think, going to lower the age of voting. I forget exactly was related to town meeting, but it was a voting age issue. And we had at least one BU professor of law speak extensively on the subject of when you have, you know, individuals that are, you know, lower than the age of consent. So 14-year-olds, for instance, that are going to be voting and making recommendations on policy. They need to make themselves available to the public, the, the entire public, to be able to be solicited and lobbied. They need to meet with them. Have you explored that issue? Did you look at the, at how this discussion kind of played out and, and legalities of it? Have you done any research with having a 14-year-old needing to be able to take a knock on the door of their home so that they can be lobbied on issues that are coming before them as a commissioner?
Um, yeah. And so that was actually one of the things that we discussed on two meetings earlier on this council today. One with the school Subcommittee for the Advisory Council and the other with CTOS. This proposal, given that it would create sort of a youth council as a border commission in the same way that other, you know, demographic-based community, uh, commissions are, like in the Commission for Women, the Commission on Disability. Given that it has sort of that border commission sort of status, you know, it would be subject to open meeting law. It would be subject to having members of the public weigh in on, on what they are considering, on anything that the youth council would consider. And so, you know, I, I would trust that the members of the youth council would, you know, adhere to things like open meeting law, would adhere to, you know, ensuring that, you know, there is a public voice in what the committee is considering, or what the council is considering. And so, you know, I strongly believe that, you know, when you are, whether you are 14, whether you are 24, when you're putting yourself on that commission, when you're committing yourself to making, you know, recommendations on, on policy as part of the youth council. You know, I strongly believe that, that you are committing yourself to also respecting the principles of, of open meeting law, the principles of, you know, letting the public influence your work, give opinions on what you're doing. And so I think that, you know, all members of, of the council would respect that.
Yeah, I guess you may not have understood my question. The question was related to a 14-year-old who's on the commission that's going to be potentially taking a vote on allocating funds or setting policy. You know, certainly they would, they would be sitting in a public meeting that's subject to the open meeting law. But I'm talking about having to take a meeting over coffee or knocking on their door to be solicited by the public, anybody. You can't say no. Anybody can come knock on your door. I'm, this was.
You can say no. I mean, because it's, I mean, it's not the individual members of the commission that you're, you'd be lobbying, but the commission itself.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting at this. This came up quite a bit at the last, at this town meeting issue on 16-year-olds.
I think the issue that Paul is highlighting is that 14-year-olds, 15-year-olds are protected by privacy laws.
Right.
Right.
And once you're in a public body, that goes out the window. Or doesn't?
Not individually, it doesn't.
Well, then, so you're going to have 10 members of a commission, say, three of whom don't have their telephone numbers and emails available to the public?
Well, I don't know. It sounds right.
Well, that's a really interesting question, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a lot of questions about it.
It'd be interesting, interesting to hear what Town Council says. David?
I agree. These are important questions. Do we have an opinion from Town Council about how we would address minors on the board and access to them in terms of soliciting input?
Jonathan Simpson is online.
And therefore.
I have not, I have not been asked to, to look into this, so I cannot, and I cannot speak on it, speak to it definitively. But I do recognize the, the situation that this may, that this may put us in. I would, I'm happy to look into this more and get, get back to you on it.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing a little digging on this. I think the, the kind of crux of this, I understand it. And again, I want to defer to, I know Joe has done some digging into this, is that it's a question of, you know, petitioning your, your government, the right to petition your government, what does that entail? Is it sufficient that there is a, a means to petition? Or does it have to be equal access? You know, what is, what does the rules require and all of that? I don't think it extends to the issue necessarily of someone has to take a, 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 a home visit, right? But it is a question of what are the avenues of communication? Are they sufficient? Are they, are they commensurate with what's available in other committees' situations? But we'll do some digging on it.
Yeah, so I, I would just, Jonathan, Chaz, I would refer you to, if, if she's accessible and available, Professor Silbaugh of BU Law. I think wrote and spoke extensively on this. I think wrote and spoke extensively on this particular subject when we were talking about um lowering the age of uh the voting age in Brookline.
Okay, which is, anyway, John?
Or town, it might have been town meeting.
Oh, and it's a different issue, though. Yeah.
Um, I I I'm not even sure who uh would answer this question, but this this gets me wondering, is there a difference between a um commission, a council, uh, a committee? And does it matter in this instance whether it's a a youth commission or a youth council?
I don't think so. I mean, they're both subject to the open meeting law and you know, the the issue that Paul raised, and that is whether individual members of the committee or commission or whatever body is um are 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 required to allow themselves to be lobbied. Uh-huh. To put themselves out into the public and, you know. Um, I hope that's not the case. I mean, because I tell people.
But you're but you're but you're accessed, but all of your information is accessible, your phone number, your email, I mean, your address, all of that is publicly available. That's not available for every fourteen-year-old in Brookline.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that's a separate question.
Um, uh, that was just my first question, if 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 that's okay. Um, so, uh, I I I have some hesitations about this, um, and I'm going to hope to get better informed about it. Um, I, you know, I appreciate that you you listed several neighboring communities that have. Um, you're proposing a Brookline Youth Commission, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, um, so, uh, I did some quick checking. Uh, it seems Cambridge has what they call the Cambridge Youth Council. Um, and the Cambridge Youth Council is a subcommittee of something called the Family Policy Council, which is a um uh group that is appointed by the mayor. So, you know, you have a different form of government in Cambridge. Um, and that you have a mayor who appoints a family policy council, and then the family policy council recruits and appoints um a youth council. That kind of arrangement uh i- is something I'm a little bit more comfortable with because I I don't want whatever is formed, if we if we go ahead with this, to be in competition with other bodies that we also appoint um as members of the select board um who are supposed to be representing the very same um constituencies. You know, we have, we have boards that we appoint already that, as part of their mission, um, that they should be attentive to and respond to the needs of young people in the community. And um I I want to be sure that if we're going to go go about appointing some group that is solely focused on uh youth, that somehow it fits in the matrix of the other bodies that we appoint. So, um, I'm going to take some more time on this, but I thank you very much for bringing it forward and getting the conversation started.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just, I'm talking with the petitioners. Okay, yes, go ahead, Karen.
Oh, no, I mean, um, I was just, yeah, um, but, you know, thank you for for even considering it. Um, just to um sort of address some of the other neighboring, um, the youth councils in neighboring municipalities. Um, in many cases, um, Boston is an example. Boston has what's um called a mayor's youth council, which is a group of, you know, about fifty kids. Um, and that's actually um derived through the community engagement division um of the the mayor's office of the city of Boston. Um, you know, that is the same case with with Brighton, um, is another one, with Arlington is another one. Um, Arlington actually um is, it has a a border commission that is called the Ar- Arlington Youth Council. Um, but some of these other municipalities have their youth councils that are, you know, specifically derived through a a sip um community engagement kind of department. Um, and so, you know, I think that when drafting the article, um, you know, given that Brookline um doesn't have necessarily a department on um, you know, community engagement, um, in the same explicit kind of sense that that a lot of these um other municipalities do. Um, you know, I think Arlington serves as an example um in having their youth council serve as a a specific board or commission within the town's government. Go ahead.
Oh, so to answer your, uh, John's earlier question, so a commit, you know, over time, committee, commission, council have kind of grown to be interchangeable. Um, just as things have gone on, but a a committee is typically, you know, formed to handle a specific task or issue, whereas a commission is more of a formal oversight body. Um, so, um, the commission tends to have a more formal oversight context, but that's, it really is just at this point. I I think most people tend to use the terms interchangeably. For example, Parks and Rec, you know, is referred to as a committee. It really is more of a commission, uh, for example, so.
All right, a quick, just a quick uh follow-up for the for the petitioner. Um, because you did mention Arlington and i- is what you're talking about the Young Arlington Collaborative? Is that what you're talking about?
Um, no, I'm talking about um the article Arlington um youth, actually, um, no, no, um, it should be the article, um, Arlington Youth Council. Yeah, that's that's what it's called.
Called the Arlington Youth Council. Okay, thanks.
Paul?
Yeah, I just, um, we had also received a memo in our packet um uh from uh Sagal Reese, uh, and she, you know, she raised uh an important question about how uh this particular commission would interface, integrate with existing structures, I think somewhat of maybe what John had said earlier. Uh, and she specifically raised the Brookline High School Peer Leaders Group and also how uh it would integrate and collaborate with um, you know, the Health and Human Services Department. I guess I'm I'm unclear about how all these things fit together and overlap. Um, and where such a council, would it be independent? Would it be uh is it a select board council? How would it integrate? Is it a subset of another uh council or group, a subcommittee? Uh, there's just a lot of questions about structurally how this fits in.
Similar to Warren Article nineteen, though. Uh, David?
So I'm a little less concerned about how this fits in with existing commissions. I understand the petitioner's point that the goal here is to have a youth-focused commission, and that piece of it doesn't currently exist. We have other commissions that overlap, too, so somebody can be both a woman and a senior, and so that that doesn't mean that we should only have one commission. So I I'm, that part I don't find persuasive, but I am concerned about some of the legal details of privacy laws for minors, and I think that has to be sorted out. I certainly am in support of the spirit of this Warren article, but depending on what we hear back from town council, it might need some more finessing so that we can make sure it's legal.
Yeah, right. I think also the fact that a lot of other committees do, a lot of other communities do this via executive appointment rather than legislative action probably speaks to some of the issues that have been raised in terms of the legality of having a a body that's a a a for- a formal body that's enshrined in the bylaws, that's um made up in part of people who can't vote. Um.
That that does speak to a, you know, my preference would see to have this body consider with advice of staff is to how to do something like this in the spirit of what the petition is bringing forward, but not enshrine it in a bylaw yet. Um, you know, to 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 have us discuss it and figure out what's the best way to do something like this at chief of goals.
But we'll 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 do some research into this.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing and see if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak. I see one person has raised their hand. Uh, Regina?
Good evening. Regina Farley from sixteen. I just attended uh dual meetings for the CTOs, and several important questions were and challenges to this article were raised. Based on the language that they reported during the meeting, this limits it to people who are enrolled in an institution, learning institution, whether it's um school, regular school, or college. And they raised the issue that what if people were between schools? People take a a year or two off before they decide where they're going to go to school. What about people who are homeschooled? That's really not covered by the language. It's their la- his language, so it was an issue that I thought was very important because, let's say dropout. We want to hear from children who have dropped out of schools, especially within Brookline. What are the problems? Um, so those was, that was just one of the most important ones, but they raised other concerns as well. And in terms of a committee, uh, town council Jennifer Depaza, when I was writing one of my articles, said it's the same thing. Can use the word committee, it covers everything. So I agree with Chaz on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members in the audience who would like to speak on Warren Article five?
Would former council like to respond to the quote?
Um, Bonnie Bastian online is raising their hand to speak. Bonnie, I'm promoting you now, and you should be able to start your video if you're comfortable and begin your comments. Bonnie, I've promoted you. There we go. I see you now.
Hi, everybody. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak really briefly on this. Um, I support this Warren article strongly. It's really exciting. Yet another opportunity for our youth to um participate in our government. Um, Brookline's young people are extremely intelligent and civically engaged. Uh, it's always so impressive to me. Um, um, I think having this commission created for youth to weigh in on applicable policy issues is important and really valuable. Um, and as far as the legal issues, I'm sure town council will figure out what the answer is, and we are innovative people, and we can find a way um for, uh, find a way to give our youth this really critical platform. Um, I think it's important to build support for uh policy with our youth. Um, I think they're often um underestimated, and I think this is a fantastic idea, and I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Are there other members of the audience online who would like to speak on this item? If so, please raise your hand using the raise the hand feature. There are approximately twenty participants online, and no one else is raising their hand to speak at this time.
Okay, I will close the hearing. I'm sorry, did I hear something?
I hit my microphone.
Oh, okay. I'll close the hearing. Um, can I ask uh Karen a question? Hi. Um, I I think John raised a question, uh, John Van Scoye raised the question of um uh individuals who are not uh actively enrolled in a public or private high school, college, or university. Um, what what why would membership have to uh be limited to people enrolled in an educational institution?
Um, yeah, so.
Is that a seriously or critical concern of yours?
Um, no, no, so, um, when we talked, uh, or when we met earlier this evening with uh CTOs with um the school subcommittee on the AC, um, that was language that I think that we all agreed um could be amended. Um, you know, it it's not a hill that I'm particularly willing to die on. Um, but by any means, um, you know, I think that the the points raised about, you know, um, you know, uh, children who are homeschooled or, you know, children who have been disconnected from the school school system um due to, you know, illness, disability, um, you know, anything that would um preclude them from having a normal, like, in-person school year. Um, you know, I think that that is certainly something that, you know, I would support and is certainly something that I'm amenable to.
Okay, any further discussion? Mike, are you just?
Well, I'm just thinking that um that's, if you drop that limitation, it broadens the article. The moderator may not allow that.
Well, we'll see.
So it's, that's always one of those naughty moderator problems, which is.
Twenty-two.
You're technically eliminating language, so are you broadening the scope of the Warren article? Hmm, um, we'll see. We'll see what the moderator says.
Okay, any further discussion?
It would, it would be good, Bernard, to get uh have town council weigh in and on some of that.
We'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, before before it comes back to you again, we'll have that opinion.
Thank you. Um, this is our public hearing. We will vote on uh the Warren article at a later meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Warren Article six, uh, acceptance of a restrictive covenant prohibiting future development from the developer of Pudding Stone at Chestnut Hill and Hancock Village. Um, I see Jonathan's on the uh screen there.
Yes.
Okay. Talk to us, huh?
Hello, everyone. Uh, for the record, uh, First Assistant Town Council Jonathan Simpson here about Warren Article six. Um, Warren Article six will authorize you to accept a restrictive covenant um related to the forty B development uh known as Pudding Stone uh in Hancock Village. Uh, Pudding Stone was the second of two forty Bs built at Hancock Village over the last decade. Um, it, when it was, one of the conditions, condition number fifteen of the comprehensive permit it received from the ZBA required that uh prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy, it enter into a restrictive covenant with the town that bars either uh Chestnut Hill Realty or anyone, any of its successors uh from building any new buildings or paved surfaces on the area covered by the comprehensive permit unless they are allowed to do so by the comprehensive permit. Uh, this was, uh, this condition was uh viewed as as important in both in both of the forty Bs. It's present in both uh both uh both comprehensive permits because the concern was that um there are a number of different ways a a landowner may argue they are have a right to build, and the town wanted to preclude the owner of the land from claiming that they had any right to build on this on this site other than through the comprehensive permit. The comprehensive permit, however, can still be amended, and that is explicitly contemplated by the restrictive covenant covenant. You are being authorized to enter. Um, and the, while it is not this, the Pudding Stone um comprehensive permit, we are even seeing that play out currently with the other forty B comprehensive permit at the residences of South Brookline when uh they are currently negotiating whether or not the ZBA will allow them to modify their permit to uh to change some of the interior parking into unit space and then move some of those parking spaces uh outside of the building. Um, that's a modification of the permit. I do not, I'm, I'm not positive it involves any construction, new buildings, or paving of space. Uh, on some of the mockups I've seen, they, with respect to the site in question, they're only, they're repurposing already paved space into parking, but I I have heard various things there. The point is, is that, I bring that up because that is a modification of the comprehensive permit that is permitted under the restrictive covenant that uh the town has already entered into for the residences of South Brookline. This restrictive covenant mirrors that one almost identically, but for um the, you know, the references to the 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 plan and the site, the dates and that sort of thing. Um, so what this will do essentially is where is town meeting will be authorizing you all to enter into a restrictive covenant that protects the town, that that the ZBA was attempting to protect the town's interests. This restrictive covenant was the way it elected to do so. The applicant agreed to it, and the applicant is now asking to fulfill its obligation to give the town what it wants that will protect the town, uh, and then therefore, by way of that, allow the development to proceed.
Okay, any questions, uh, Paul?
I just have one. Uh, thank you, Jonathan. Uh, why, I'm just curious, why does this need to go before town meeting?
Uh, it is an acquisition of an interest in real estate, and to it therefore, um, pursuant to the general laws, it requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting.
Uh-huh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Um, see if there's anyone in the audience or on line that would like to speak on this Warren article.
Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on Warren Article six? Looks like there are none in the audience. If there's anyone online who would like to speak on Warren Article six, please raise your hand using the raise the hand feature at this time. There are approximately seventeen participants online, and notice, no one is raising their hand to speak.
Okay, I'd like to clo- uh, close the public hearing and um discuss what we want to do. Any ideas? Mike?
I'm perfectly happy to go forward with this, if that's the question.
Same here.
Question?
Same here.
Want to make a motion?
Sure, um, we go back to the I'm in a different part of the meeting here, so I have to go back to.
I mean, I can make the motion.
Go ahead, yeah, why don't you go ahead, yeah.
Since you spoke up.
Yeah.
Okay, I move approval of the um uh acceptance uh of a restrictive uh covenant prohibiting future development from the developer of Pudding Stone at Chestnut Hill and Hancock Village. Um, uh, this Warren article would place that question before town meeting or vote by two-thirds. This warrant article would place that question before town meeting or vote by two-thirds uh majority. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
Mike Samman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perman?
Aye.
Your votes aye.
Thank you.
Two are warrant. Thanks Jonathan. Want to go to Chestnut Hill commercial area study now, or do you want to?
I think everyone's here for that.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Good evening, Select Board. Meredith Mooney, Economic Development Director. I'm here tonight to present an update on the Chestnut Hill Commercial Area Study. I think I was slated for ten minutes as sort of a target time for the presentation. Chair Green, I'm wondering if you would be open to um, an additional five or ten minutes to that?
Fifteen minutes? Unless anyone objects, I'm willing to. I mean, this is an important topic. We do have some time tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So the last update to the board regarding this project was back in April. That was just as we were about to launch our community engagement process. Um, since it's been a while since the board has discussed this project, I just want to give a, a quick recap of the study format um, as well as the study objectives. So this is a, a staff-led planning um initiative. We are working with a staff-led working group that is our community advisory group that includes members um from different boards and committees throughout town as well as representatives from the neighborhood as well as the town meeting precincts. In and around the study area. Um, and they have been an incredible sounding board that's provided a lot of excellent uh discussion, guidance, feedback regarding this process. Um, and that group is chaired by Select Board member Mike Samman. So. Sorry. These are the topics that I wanted to provide an update on. I think there's the most interest in um, item number four regarding City Realty's proposed redevelopment of. What's been referred to as the Chestnut Hill Office Park at twelve eighty to thirteen thirty Boylston Street. Um, so I'll try to keep the uh earlier topics more high level, but I'm certainly happy to circle back and talk more about our community engagement process and. Uh, the very robust community input that we received um throughout that process. So our community engagement um was uh throughout uh April and May into early June. Uh, and it included all of the activities that are um included on the slide here. We had public workshops, um, we hosted two sidewalks, sidewalks, two sidewalks. Uh, and took public comment at every meeting, had an online survey, and then our community advisory group members facilitated sort of smaller versions of our workshops. More in sort of a kitchen table conversation style uh with their different constituencies. So community input, uh, there's a more comprehensive summary of the community input that we received through this process that's included uh in a link in the memo included in your packets. This is also available on the project website for the public to review. We also have the raw survey data, so if people are interested in hearing um people's thoughts, we're submitted through the online survey in people's own words. That's also available um for uh people to review as well. So we categorize the feedback into kind of these four general buckets. Land uses for local needs, people-oriented placemaking, transportation connectivity and development density and intensity. I won't go through, um, these are just some of the, the key highlights that we took from that more comprehensive summary. Um, I won't read through all of these, but I will certainly uh reference them in uh some of the upcoming slides. Our consultant for this project is R K G Associates. Uh, we've been working with them. This slide sort of summarizes our initial scope of work with them, some of which is still in progress. Uh, we did have the benefit of receiving a market study that they conducted to sort of indicate from the market perspective, what are the opportunities for the Chestnut Hill area. They also helped to support our initial public engagement process. So we are still working through, we did sort of an initial first cut um of some massing models uh that were based on financial feasibility analysis that was formed, informed by. Sort of the market demand indicated from the study that R K G uh conducted. So the, uh, we're going to continue to work on um the financially feasible massing models, uh, so that is in progress. This slide indicates sort of the direction that we think we're going at this point in time with the broader study goals. So uh, from a, we anticipate that the recommendations for this project will kind of fall into a, a handful of categories. Uh, zoning, design guidelines, infrastructure improvements, and then some additional, you know, commercial area vibrancy recommendations. So in taking on uh zoning first, um, these are uh planning interventions that we plan on continuing to explore, explore over the coming weeks and months. Uh, so the base map here is a land use map, which is one of sort of the preferred concepts that R K G had developed. And it is a reflection of the community input that we received as well as. R K G's understanding of the town's um, uh broader objectives for the study, which I forgot to uh review in the beginning, but the. Leading objectives for the study is to incentivize significant net new commercial tax growth. Um, this is a reflection of the reality of the Chestnut Hill Commercial Area is sort of um the last frontier in terms of really significant commercial tax growth potential for the town. So that's reflected as a, a study priority. Uh, and then additionally, um, seeking net new commercial tax growth while also enhancing the livability and um identity of the Chestnut Hill Commercial Area. So uh, back to our um anticipated planning interventions, from a zoning perspective, um, you sort of see examples of. Um, potential uses that we'll be exploring. Um, hotel lab is indicated here on the far side of the, the study in the Chestnut Hill Office Park area. The market study indicated that there's really just not a market for that at this point in time. However, uh, it's still worthwhile to um continue the conversation and decide whether or not we want to use this as an opportunity to integrate lab use into the zoning. Um, in case, you know, there are signs of life in the lab market at some point over the next several years. The, the town isn't caught, caught fat, flat-footed at that point.
Signs of life.
So um, from at the, the bottom of the map here in sort of the handwritten indication, um, there's a, a sense of the scale. So focusing or starting on the eastern portion of the study area and focusing on Hammond Street between the Boylston Street and Heath Street intersections. We're envisioning this as more of a main street um focus and scale. There was a lot of uh contrast between the Chestnut Hill Commercial Study Area and the street, which is uh development by W S Development that is directly across the street from our study area. And there were lots of um contrasts to the level of activity and development going on at W S. The sense from the community was that um although the street, you know, it's a destination retail, the offerings tend to be a little bit more higher end and they aren't. The types of offerings that people would access or use over the course of their daily lives. So there's a lot of interest for um more services and uh goods uh that, you know, people need on a day-to-day basis. Local coffee shop, restaurant, uh, a tailor, cobbler, dry cleaner, those types of uses. So we. Um, are interested in creating or exploring, creating a new category of these neighborhood service retail. And then looking for opportunities to create incentives for those at the ground floor level within the study area. So kind of um this Hammond Street to Holly Street or Holly Lane block. And then as you move westward across the study area, uh, you know, the Hammond Street kind of main street area, more of a low to mid-by scale. And as you move towards the Newton Brookline border, increasing in height, um, with the tallest buildings concentrated um at the. Towards the Newton border portion of the study area. In terms of uh potential infrastructure improvements, recommendations that we like to explore. There was a lot of discussion about Heath Street. Uh, the pedestrian experience as you move two blocks in from Boylston Street towards Heath Street is uh dramatically different. Heath Street definitely has a lot more of a suburban experience. Um, and so there was a lot of interest in um, you know, preserving that pedestrian experience, but also there were concerns about. Cut-through traffic congestion during rush hour um and the, you know, high speeds at which vehicles travel through the area. So we were, we're looking forward to working with Transportation Engineering Division to talk about uh what opportunities there might be as the properties abutting Heath Street are redeveloped. To maybe add some additional um, uh, public space and to add um infrastructure to support a more positive um pedestrian. And um, this is also a preferred bike route um and uh infrastructure for bike facilities as well. Other infrastructure improvements, um, Boylston Street, the, there was sort of a, a sense that Boylston Street is what it is. Um, it will never be a place that is enjoyable to spend a lot of time or um walk along as a pedestrian. However, the need to create safer and easier uh crossings to get from either side of Boylston Street within the study area is certainly objective and we're going to be exploring opportunities for that. We have limitations, that is mass D O T. Um, that's not a, a local road. But it's certainly a priority and important to the long-term success of the area. It's also important, um, there is a, a green line stop um as you continue up Hammond Street. So I think it's important to make those uh connections safer and easier uh in order to sort of uh emphasize the transit-oriented element of the study area. So um. That's kind of a, a sense of where we're going. We were sort of gathering our thoughts after the community engagement process. And um, developing sort of this concept of where we would like to go. When we approached by City Realty, which is the new owner of the Chestnut Hill Office Park um over the summer. Uh, and they approached the planning departments, Select Board member Sam Man. And uh, having listened to and participated in our entire community engagement process, uh, they did have a redevelopment proposal for our consideration. So in um reviewing that proposal, uh, we, the overlap and parallels between where we saw. This project going in terms of recommendations from the staff perspective, as well as our, of our awareness of sort of the community wish list in this project. Um, we saw there was a lot of overlap um, uh, with City Realty's vision for the site as well. So um, given the fact that um it was a well-integrated proposal, strong alignment with and response to the community needs. That we learned about through the community engagement process, it would be advisable for the town to sort of move forward with a phased approach to this study. Initially, we were. Envisioning that we would bring a set of uh rezoning recommendations and proposals for town meetings consideration at the fall twenty twenty-five town meeting. We would like to now focus on uh phase one, where we'll be focusing on uh the phase one area, which includes the Chestnut Hill Office Park in addition to another property that's included along the same block. Uh, and then uh for May twenty twenty-five town meeting and then return to town meeting to um propose rezoning for the remainder of the study area in fall twenty twenty-five. So here's a, a closer look at phase one. So um, can you see my cursor here? Okay. So um, phase one includes two properties. So the, the office, Chestnut Hill Office Park is in the larger, indicated in the outline of the larger dashes. So that's currently zoned office two point oh Chestnut Hill. That is City Realty's property. There's uh, what will also be included in phase one is this parking lot along Tully Street, uh, which is uh zoned as general business two point oh. Um, and is owned by a neighboring commercial property owner, the Growth Companies, which also owns a lot of properties uh on the other side of the Tully Street block here. So um, City Realty just last week and less than a week ago, um publicly presented their redevelopment proposal for the first time. I should also note that the City Realty team and representatives are in the room this evening. I will not do this presentation justice. There is a recording of the original presentation on the study website. Uh, these are excerpts from their slide deck, which I selected just to sort of um underscore the key components of the uh development proposal, but the full slide deck is also available. Um, for the public to review. Last night, our consultant, R K G, did do a pro forma analysis evaluating um. Uh, the, the strength of this proposal and, and whether it's um valid. Uh, so that discussion was last night. And we'll talk a little bit more about next steps in the later slides. So City Realty's proposal is um three buildings in varying size uh that all face um oriented around sort of a central courtyard and lawn area. Building A uh in the westernmost point of the, the study area and the site uh is a luxury condos over hotel that's um proposed at twenty floors. Uh, and then building B is multifamily, uh, which is along the Boylston Street side. And building C indicated here, uh, that's twelve stories and then building C is thirteen stories with a mix of senior housing as well as medical um office and retail. There's also um a ground floor retail component for building B as well. Street elevations to um just talk a little bit more about the proposed heights. The uh, street elevations from the Boylston Street and then from the Heath Street side. Here are some initial renderings with um different views. The aerial view gives you a sense of sort of the scale of the um interior green space um that they're proposing. There's an overview of the landscape design. The next slide here um is a little more zoomed in on sort of what the vision is for. This large, open public space. And at the bottom, you see some examples of uh how they're anticipating activating uh that open space. They included this uh comparison, which I think is um interesting point of comparison. We've heard a lot about references to the Chestnut Hill Square development as well as the street. Um, and so this is a comparison of um within the surface area of those developments. Compared to City Realty's proposal, uh, how was the space prioritized um between cars, pedestrian and landscape elements? Uh, and so Chestnut Hill Square is at the top here. You can see it's very, you know, sort of by definition, a very car-centric development with a lot of the parking in the center of the development space. And then the street, um, which also um, as you approach from Boylston Street, there's some parking, uh, sort of teaser parking available from the street, but there's a lot of parking behind the, the property. So um, you know, Chestnut Hill Square, seventy-one percent surface area for car, eighty percent surface area for the street. Um, and if you're looking at the City Realty proposal, um, the majority of the surface area is really prioritized for pedestrian and landscape use. They're able to achieve this um because there's the proposed investment in two levels of underground parking. I believe there are about eight hundred and fifty proposed parking spaces and the cost for each of those is around one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's a significant investment. Um, for that type of parking, underground parking infrastructure. So the underground parking infrastructure is really to enable. This open space concept, which is something that we did here as a priority in the community engagement process, is really what's driving the proposed heights of these buildings. For the, so the, the traffic portion is a, a work in progress. And their current proposal, they're proposing one um point of access, a, a new vehicular connection that would go from Boylston Street with the cut-through onto Heath Street. And they're recommending left turn onto Heath Street and then left turn onto Tully is how people would return to Route nine. The current property taxes for the Chestnut Hill Office Park are just over a million dollars. This proposal is um projected to be um uh in the neighborhood of um ten million dollars. That does, that's a conservative estimate and that it doesn't include the potential hotel excise tax that would be associated with the hotel development. So um, back of the envelope currently is that this would be an additional nine million dollars um in annual tax growth for the town. So next steps, um, tonight, we're presenting the update to the Select Board. Uh, we had three meetings with the Community Advisory Group in September. We have. Um, a few more meetings slated for October and then two more in November. Um, at which point I think we'll be ready to come back to the Select Board with an update and I would anticipate that there'd be sort of significant changes to the current proposal. Um, we're very aware and have already heard a lot about um concerns regarding the height. We are in the process of preparing a memo that summarizes the feedback we've received to date from the Community Advisory Group internally from staff in the Regulatory and Housing Divisions. And so we'll be providing that to City Realty and asking them to comment on and circle back uh with some of the concerns and questions that we have at this point. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Very exciting. And interesting too. Any uh questions, Paul? See, you have your hands.
Yeah, I made some notes, Bernard. Um, thank you. Great presentation. It was quick. So I had uh two, actually three questions. The first, you, you mentioned um something about incentivizing use. For retail. Could you talk a little bit more about that and how we can encourage a cobbler or a dry cleaner versus. You know, another noodle place or, you know, a restaurant of some kind.
It's a great question. Um, I don't have a, a lot of detail at this point. One of our community advisory group members is Ken Lewis, a member of the Economic Development Advisory Board. Who was very invested in the development of the ground floor commercial incentive, which was a component of the M B T A Communities rezoning. So I think we're going to be looking at that as sort of a, a jumping off point about how we might be able to integrate incentivizing particular uses.
Yes, to get actually into a specific category of use, right? Dry cleaner versus a commercial space, which could be a restaurant. I'd be really interested in that. That's very interesting to me. The parking eight hundred cars, where, do you know where the parking garage is going to be? Is it just under the hotel or is it kind of spanning a large portion of the site?
My understanding is it's spanning the entire site.
It would be the entire site, okay. And then uh, my last question is related to, I heard luxury condos. Is this, I assume this would fit into our inclusionary zoning in that, you know, there's going to be substantial amount of affordable deed restricted housing in there as well?
It is a great question. So in the pro forma analysis, uh, the luxury condos um are sort of a key component to the, the financing. This is proposed to be developed in phases with the condos in the hotel coming first. Sale of the condos would help to advance the um. Development, construction of phase two. The, something that the consultant did point out is that within the pro forma analysis, there weren't indications. there weren't indications of specific affordable housing allocations for the different types of uses. But there was, they are carrying a particular line item for costs associated with providing the affordable housing. So my sense is that this is certainly an area for negotiation, but I see select.
And this would be our, this would trigger our inclusionary zoning, right?
Right. So I think one thing is one's eye tends to go directly to the hotel and luxury housing, but there's also a building. Excuse me, with mixed, mixed use, commercial residential. That building has substantially more. Actually, I better back away from that. A substantial number anyway of apartments. And those certainly a portion of those would be affordable. The consultant gave us a pretty good picture of the number of affordable housing units. And unfortunately, I don't have my notes with me, but do you recall the?
I don't think there was a specific number, but there was, we know that they're carrying the cost of providing the affordable housing, but it's not clear to us the expectations about.
Right, the actual, actual quantity. So, you know, there, there. It's certainly been conveyed to the developer that affordable housing is an element that needs to be included here.
It's required by our bylaws, right?
Well, it's required, you know, there are, there are, yes. The short answer is yes.
Satisfying that requirement.
There are way different ways of satisfying it is perhaps the best way to put it. Yep.
John.
Meredith, thank you so much for an excellent presentation. And if I may say so, thank you to City Realty for coming forward with a very ambitious plan for Brookline. It's going to require a lot of back and forth, but hopefully we're going to end up at the end of the day with something that everybody agrees is good for the town. Could you, just off the top of your head, specify, how many total parking spaces are we talking about that this development is going to require? And how many of that total will be in the underground parking?
So off the top of my head, the, and this was included in the pro forma analysis memo, which I have not forwarded to be included in part of the presentation materials, but I can certainly share that with the select board. So I think based on current parking requirements, our consultant estimated that there would be the need for somewhere in the realm of an additional 250 parking spaces. So the parking ratios, we still need to work through that element of it. I think of the 850, the majority of the parking would be underground. And then the surface parking would be really minimal.
The vast majority is underground, 850 yard spaces.
And then you're talking about there's that, there's that one parking structure on the, on the map. That's where you're anticipating.
Oh, so actually the parking structure is, there is the parking structure on the land scenario, but that's for phase two.
Well, I'm sorry. Now I'm, I'm confused. So there's a, there's building A, building B, building C. There's the central courtyard, you know, that's green. There's the parking under the central courtyard. And where is this garage?
Sorry, the, it's underground parking. So no parking structure. It's all underground.
Don't, don't confuse what's there now with what the developer is proposing. What they're proposing is initially, what they proposed is no surface garage, all underground.
Yeah.
That was one, one of the, there was a wishlist developed by listening to the neighbors. And among other things, there was a desire not to have a sea of surface parking or even an above surface garage. And so the developer produces, produced a plan that has an all underground, basically an all underground garage.
All underground garage.
And there is an associated cost with that, which feeds into the question of, well, how high do we have to build in order to make this work?
So I heard mention of two levels underground.
Right.
850 spaces.
Yep.
That's over 400 spaces per level.
It, the garage extends as, as I understood it, and please correct me if I'm wrong. The garage actually extends out to the periphery of the, of the property.
The underground garage. Yeah. Boy, I'm having a hard time picturing 850 underground spaces, but I, you know, I don't go around, you know, designing.
That same question.
Designing parking. So second question is, what, what number of stories would be legal under the current zoning?
The tallest building is currently the Citizens Bank Building, which is six stories. So that's sort of the precedent for height in the area.
We have an answer to that.
Yeah, Jennifer raised her hand.
55 feet.
Which translates to roughly how many stories?
Four to five stories.
Four to five. So clearly some substantial magnitude of increase over what is the current allowed number of stories in height.
Yes.
Be required. Okay.
David's got it. How tall is the tallest building across the street in Newton?
Five stories.
Isn't there, isn't there a taller building over there somewhere though?
Yeah, there's, so we had a discussion about this. The tallest building across the street is 18 stories. It's the Chestnut Hill Towers attached to the Chestnut Hill Mall. But to be realistic, that building is setback of those two buildings. I believe there are two are setbacks substantially from the street. From the, the, not the street, but rather.
Right, the, right, Boston Street.
So I would also like to address scale. 20 stories would likely be the tallest building in Brookline or close to it. Other than the two towers that are being referenced that are not quite in that area because they're quite a bit set back. This would create a lot of shadows. This would dramatically change the feel of that neighborhood. So is the reason for selecting 20 that that's what makes it the project economically viable? Or was it more that you're looking to maximize the amount of tax revenue that could come in?
Mike, did you want to?
The, the proposal comes from, for 20 stories comes from the developer based on the first question. How, how high do we have to make this in order to generate enough revenue to pay for the cost of the underground garage? There's ledge there. Is going to be a substantial amount of cost. The difference between building a surface parking garage and an underground garage is about $75,000 per space. So if you put it all underground, which is what we were, what, what, what we heard from the, from the community initially, put it all underground, then you have to build high enough to pay for the cost of doing that work and get, still get a profit out of the building that's constructed upon.
David? So hypothetically, if we cut the verticality in half and it were 10 stories, how many, how much surface parking would there need to be to still realize a similar gain?
So I think the goal is the shadow impacts that you brought up, that was something that wasn't discussed in the initial presentation. That's going to be included in our initial feedback memo for things that we'd like City Realty to report back on or address. Any potential, potential issues related to shadow impacts. I think the, the question of how much, how many floors we can reduce for the proposal is sort of a back and forth question because there is going to be a threshold where, you know, reducing the size of one of the buildings is going to undermine sort of the broader pro forma. And then that would require, you know, a real rethinking of the proposal and probably the provision of the underground parking, which would have implications for the types of amenities like the open space. So I think where the process going forward is going to be a lot of trying to experiment with pulling potential levers and seeing how that would impact the proposal. In, in my mind, I think, I'm happy we move forward and we did the pro forma analysis of this initial proposal. Because in my mind, I feel like the 9 million in annual net new tax growth is an important benchmark. And as we make modifications, that number will also decrease. And so it's just giving us a sense of opportunity cost.
So I do think it would be good to understand those trade offs. The other issue with the building heights, if you have 20 stories, 13 and 12, I, I just question whether the green space is truly as valuable and experienced because that'll be massive shadows. You're not going to really have light getting into there. And will people really want to congregate there? And then also in terms of the 9 million. I think that there will be 650 residential units that'll be a part of this. Is that correct?
Something on that order.
Yep.
And I think we have to be careful about also looking at what the cost and increased demand on town services would be. Because that effectively may reduce the nine. And so that's sort of another push pull.
Absolutely. The, the first point that was actually, we have a few architects and landscape architects on our community advisory group. And that was certainly one of the initial pieces of feedback where there was the recognition of what City Realty was trying to achieve with that larger open space. But questions about given the size of the buildings all around the space, if that canyon effect would sort of undermine what they were trying to achieve there. So I would assume we're going to, you know, hear their response to that, hopefully at the October 9th meeting. And then your other point, so we had anticipated as we got further along in the study and had a better sense of what, what we wanted for the area of conducting a broader fiscal impact analysis to really understand, given the objectives of net new commercial tax growth, residential is going to have to be a component of any development. You're going to need additional residential density, especially to support ground floor retail and have that be successful in the long term. So we just want to be sure that we are balancing the addition of those uses and that the residential units and the addition of that isn't adding expenses that are going to undercut whatever gains we've achieved from commercial tax growth.
So I, I wonder if I could just chime in and, and answer a piece of David's question.
Okay.
If you were to take, I mean, this is a very, a rough cut. 200 spaces and put them above ground instead in a parking structure. You would reduce costs by about $15 million, which is translates into being able to reduce the total amount of floor space by about 30,000 square feet. Not an inconsequential amount, but it's also not enough to get you down to 10 stories. So there, this is going to be a bit of an iterative process. And I think the, one of the issues that we face with the community is, oh my God, 20 stories, but it is an iterative process. There's going to be a back and forth. And there will be, it, it, there will be something other than the initial proposal, I guess, that, that eventually emerges from this. But the point that you raised is, you know, I, I think a very apt one. You sort of, you get what you pay for, you, you have to recognize the economic consequences of what you want. One of the most cogent remarks was made by one of the neighborhood members of the community advisory group. She said exactly that. Be careful what you wish for because we looked at this list of things that the proposal matches. And then looked at the consequence of that in terms of height and said, oh my God. So you're, you're right on the right track.
Yeah, just briefly, I, a quick point, you said something about needing the housing in order to support the ground floor retail. Across the street, they don't have housing and they have a very robust retail, right? So I, I don't know what the ratio is. I'd be curious to know if there's some way to help understand residential versus commercial viability, if there's a relationship there. But I wanted to understand with 650 residences or more and hotel guests, what type of connection is going to be created between this development and the public transit? Are we, you know, this could be an important, it's a lot of folks probably trying to cross the road. Right? To get to public transit and also to the schools.
Absolutely. So more conversations about safer pedestrian connections, as we talked about in sort of our proposed interventions is definitely something that we're considering. The transportation piece is sort of evolving and I think we're going to learn more. I know that City Realty is in the process of conducting sort of their transportation analysis. And as we, the proposal shifts and the scale of buildings change and, you know, it's possible that it might not be a great investment to do too deep of an analysis on the transportation impacts in this current iteration of the proposal. But with the hotel, you know, I think there'll be questions, follow up, are you planning a shuttle service? You know, that will provide easier access to the transit routes. Will this be available to just your guests or broader to other members of the, the public who are visiting the study area to help make that connectivity to the public transit more effective.
I guess I'm hoping that I see Mr. Dempsey here, that that's a signal that we're serious about making this a good connection to public transit and that's safe mobility and blockability. Okay.
Go ahead. A couple of things. I just want to go back to the comparative and Chestnut Hill Towers was brought up and I, I have to just sort of put on the record that Chestnut Hill Towers themselves say that their tower is 16 stories. So it might seem like a small difference whether it's 16 or 18 and this is proposed to be 20. You know, I think at the end of the day, we are going to get down to whether this is something less than 20 and if something less than 20 is more like 18 or more like 16. So these comparatives are useful as long as we can make sure that we've got reliable information and maybe Chestnut Hill Towers isn't even correct as to how tall their tower is, but they say it's 16. And you mentioned that cars would exit the, this development and then turn onto Heath Street and then turn onto Tully Street. But what's to stop them from turning right onto Heath Street and then going to the light at Hammond, at Hammond Pond Parkway?
I think that would require some more conversation with our transportation engineering division about how that could be configured to really discourage the, the right turn. But that's initial feedback from the community advisory group, the single entry through Boylston Street and onto Heath Street, that was definitely a subject of a lot of discussion. So I think there were questions about other opportunities to provide other ingress, egress points. And would there be a way to provide a more direct entrance connection from the Brookline approach to the site? Without having to circle back to the Newton side and come in through Boylston.
But if I understand your, your answer for now, nothing is in this plan that would dictate that the exit from the development turn left on the Heath Street and left on the Tully. Cars would go whichever direction they wanted unless something is changed about Heath Street at this point, right?
No, it's the, it's the exit from the driveway that controls. So you put, there's a, there are a couple of examples of this in Brookline, but you put essentially a barrier that makes it, unless you've got a tank, impossible to make that left turn. It forces vehicles, sorry, a right turn, that forces vehicles to go left.
It's a barrier, but it's not a barrier in the street.
No, it's on the, it's in the driveway and then you, you may, because you don't want to block the flow of traffic on the street if you're trying to continue to be a two way street.
Yeah.
You can't put it out into the street.
Yeah. Well, I'd be interested in seeing what that looks like.
So will I.
Yeah. Sorry, now I'm blanking out. The other question was, oh. You know, I'm not sure that anybody needs to even comment on, on what I'm going to say right now, but I do think it's a very interesting question that should be addressed. And is going, is not going to be easy to address. Setting up this development as it is now on paper is going to mean that an awful lot of people live on a site in, you know, people from one sort of, of one description or another. Some of them, you know, in luxury condos, some of them in, you know, age restricted housing. Some of them hotel guests. And they are going to be directly across the street from one of the nicest and most vital and active shopping areas, you know, west of Boston. It's, you know, a magnet for all kinds of people to come and shop. And they're going to say, oh, boy, this is so convenient. I could walk there. How would they walk there?
Yeah, the, the Boylston Street challenge. So I think that what I would like to see included in the recommendations for this study is going beyond just saying, we need better pedestrian connections or more traffic crossings and thinking more concretely about strategies that are going to help us get there. There have been lots of discussions about Boylston Street. I think of them, most of them have been more focused on Brookline Village. Although I defer to Chris on conversations about improving the, the quality of Boylston Street. So that is definitely a top of mind question, something that we've heard a lot about. And that hopefully now with City Realty, that there's the opportunity to have some partnership in advancing, improving those connections to the other side of Boylston.
And, and just to kind of put a fine point on my question, the only way to do that right now, you really can't walk down to Hammond Pond Parkway, you know, and then back because you end up kind of in no man's land where there's nothing but cars.
I'm sorry, I understand. It was a very direct question, but like literally how now would you get to the other side of Boylston? So there's a sidewalk at Tully Street. There's a mid block crossing right near the skincare physician's mattress firm. And then if you go farther down to the Hammond, Boylston Street.
Right. And, and my point was going to be anybody who's, I happen to be very familiar with those intersections for better or for worse. I live in Chestnut Hill. I confess, I live in Chestnut Hill. And we use the street a lot and we use that area a lot. I used to live on Heath Street in the upper end near Woodland. And there's a blinking light crossing, one of these things you can activate and it flashes. light crossing, one of these things you can activate and it flashes. Boy, is that dangerous, you know, because some cars stop, some cars don't, there have been rear-end collisions there. It's not a daily-use crossing that people would find, feel comfortable with on a regular basis. There is the intersection that you mentioned, there are huge trucks that do U-turns and turns into the street, making deliveries. It's, you know, wow, I mean, the, the, the risk you would have to take every day that you use that crossing are considerable, not pleasant. And then there's the intersection at Hammond Street, which created so many concerns for people when there was talk of a Baldwin School about the safety of just, you know, executing a crossing at that intersection, that there was, you know, all kinds of controversy and traffic studies had to be done and so on. And to further make the point, there is no really good, pleasant, and attractive way to do a pedestrian trip to the Chestnut Hill T-stop right now. There's kind of sidewalks, and then there's not sidewalks, there's sidewalks in terrible repair, there's lines and lines of cars trying to get into the Star Market, you know, parking lot that if you cross the street, God forbid, you know, they could hit you. And for us to really get the full advantage of this and have it, have access to public transportation is gonna require a lot of improvement just in getting people from that development to the Chestnut Hill Stop and, and getting them across the street to the street, because they're, they're gonna wanna walk to the street. But the way it is now, I bet you a lot of them would quite literally get in their car, able to throw a stone to the street and go around and go around and go around and then join all of the hundreds and hundreds of people that park, you know, over at the street. We don't want them doing that, so.
Absolutely.
It's a lot of work to be done.
Yes.
Just to flag on this, because this is a really important point, and I think something that we are thinking about townwide as we approach Phase Two on this, but just the, the interconnectivity of that space as it is redeveloped between us and Newton, and the, the complementary uses that we're thinking about for those spaces. One of the things that's kind of in its infancy now that we are starting to discuss at a very early level with our counterparts in Newton, but also kind of regionally, is this idea of, you know, Route Nine is a state route. There are large-scale private developers that are thinking, that are either already established or will be established on either side of that route, and you have two different communities that have a significant need for that space to be revitalized. We're thinking of ways that we may be able to influence the state to either support or allow us to support upgrades to Route Nine in that neighborhood, such as overpasses, underpasses, ways of getting pedestrians through that space. You know, Massachusetts is one of the only states that doesn't do regional ballot initiatives for roadway projects. You know, other states like California, their counties do, you know, basically put on the ballot a question, you know, are you willing to see your property taxes go up a set amount? It's a debt exclusion for, for traffic work. So one, you know, this can range all the way from having internal conversations with the state, with MassDOT, about figuring out a way for us to invest in Route Nine, to going to the legislature and asking them, can we run a pilot on, you know, a regional ballot initiative to see whether or not we wanna upgrade the Route Nine in Chestnut Hill? So these are all the levels of questions that we're thinking about, because you're right, there's gotta be better pedestrian infrastructure in that neighborhood, and it's hard to do when it's a state road. So we gotta figure out a way to get the state on board with both Newton and Brookline redeveloping that area.
David.
Good to hear.
Regarding traffic flow, a couple more questions I have. So with 650 units, a hotel, senior housing, is there enough space for ambulances, emergency vehicles? Would we have to take a ladder truck for South Brookline more seriously with that kind of verticality? Have you looked at some of those impacts?
Those are excellent questions. I think, I know that City Realty was having some preliminary conversations with emergency services, particularly about access to the, the senior center or the senior housing development, but we will continue to delve into that and circle back.
Thank you. And then my second question would be about the decision to have the exit go on to Heath Street. So Chestnut Hill, the square, very consciously made a decision not to open up into Heath Street, and obviously here the proposal is to do so, so I'm just wondering how you reached that conclusion.
I think, well, so not our proposal, City Realty's proposal. My understanding is in prioritizing creating the open space plaza, if you were to sort of reroute the connection and try to route it through the Tully Street, you're sort of undercutting a lot of that open space, and I think that was sort of the initial rationale for that.
Hey, you wanna get up to the, you wanna go to the podium and?
Sure. Okay. So Cliff Kensington from City Realty is going to answer that question.
Yeah.
So thank you, everyone, sorry about that. So yes, Meredith is right, there was definitely the, the drive, would require a drive through the middle of the, of the open space, but there is also a danger inherent in trying to create Boylston Street-only access, because for any westbound traffic, if you think about, this is what the site is now, if you were merging onto Boylston Street, the only way to be going westbound would be to try to cross three lanes at once and back up. Right now, there's a U-turn at the Tully Street intersection, which is the way you get back around. So, you know, a lot of times you'd see either people crossing over to, and basically blocking traffic on Route Nine, or they would go onto Boylston Street, then turn right onto Tully, and then cut through the Heath Street neighborhood in order to get over to Hammond Pond Parkway, because there right now isn't, you know, the advantage of the Chestnut Hill Square development is they have a full lighted intersection there that allows people exiting to go eastbound or westbound. You know, we, we are unlikely to have that, but we already, but Tully Street does have a lighted intersection that allows eastbound and westbound traffic. So our priority was getting traffic over to that light and allowing the traffic to kind of utilize that intersection instead of trying to back up Route Nine or, you know, infiltrate through the, the residential neighborhood.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Cliff Kensington from City Realty.
Yeah, I was relying on Meredith's introduction.
May I ask another question?
Yes, John.
I don't know if this has been answered already, but I'm just gonna go ahead. When will we see the shadow studies on this, and who will do the shadow studies on this?
City Realty and their architectural team, and I know that we're anticipating some updates on the project at the October 9th meeting, which will be before the comp plan kickoff meeting, so our members can also participate in that. So hopefully later this month we'll have some updates, and we can certainly forward that to you as we.
And, and one last, maybe not last, I'm sure everybody hopes it's my last, but can, can Chestnut Hill, excuse me, can City Realty, forgive me, point to a development they have done that I could visit and I'd say, you know, I'd get an idea of a similar type of development that they've done and sort of what it's like in practice?
Cliff Kensington.
I, I certainly cannot point to another five-acre, you know, three-building development we, we have done. We have done, you know, a, a number, we have done some planning, you know, multi-building projects in, in Alston and some, you know, mid-rise projects as well in residential neighborhoods and some existing commercial projects, but we do not have something of this scale that we have completed in the past.
And, and any that you're aware of, whether you did them or not, that you think of as being in the same category as this, you know, one, one tower, couple of other medium towers?
Yeah, so we definitely have pointed to, you know, kind of the Assembly, Assembly Row in Somerville or the Arsenal Square development in Watertown as examples of mixtures of retail, commercial, residential, with kind of centralized parking structures, in their cases, multiple levels above ground, and, you know, obviously instead of an underground like we are looking for, but that encourages a more pedestrian use, you know, we're trying to improve upon even those that still are crisscrossed with, with streets and have some, you know, a lot of car-focused traffic. We're trying to stay even more pedestrian-focused, but, you know, those are some of the ones we're pulling from, in addition to some of your more, you know, suburban retail like the ones in the area, like University Ave in Westwood or other areas that kind of are larger-scale developments along a, a busy kind of state road of, of, similar to this.
I think one of the questions that is going, I'm sorry to just throw in a last thought, one of the questions that I think a lot of people have right now is, it's wonderful that there is green space and that this is built around the green space, but as you think about it and as you look at it, you begin to wonder, will the public really feel like that's a public space? Because it's sort of dead ends, and, or will they feel like it's the courtyard that belongs to the people who live in those buildings and I'm not really, you know, feeling particularly welcome in that courtyard?
Yeah, and, and that's, that's certainly been a main focus of ours, you know, I think you'll see in the presentation and recordings, one of the things we talked about is not only do we want it to be welcoming to the people who don't live there, we want it to be welcoming to the people who aren't even shopping there. You know, we are, we're really working on the connections to the area so it doesn't, so it doesn't feel closed off, you know, that's why we're trying to get it to the ground level as opposed to just kind of having, you know, raised above a parking structure that often cuts off from the neighborhood. We're trying to create a mixture of not only different smaller retail spaces, but also integrate them with the lobbies for the hotel and the residential areas, so that it's kind of forcing that congregation. We're creating a lot of outdoor seating that's not connected to, like, one of the retail spaces, that's not just outdoor dining for a restaurant, but just seating available to the public, stadium seating overlooking the lawn area, you know, like trying to program a lawn area that can accommodate neighborhood spaces, like, you know, smaller music performances, movie nights, you know, festivals. So we're really trying to design it so that it's not just, this is the patio that connects to the residences, or this is the outdoor dining for this restaurant, but that it is mixture and collectively used and owned by all of the buildings in the project.
Thanks.
Well. My last two questions. As you're thinking about outdoor space, if there are gonna be this many residences, consider children, activities for children, play structures, stuff like that. I don't, I don't know what's in the area there, then maybe the heat school, but that's would be a hike from there. And I wanna go back to just the affordable housing piece. I know there's a line item, Meredith, in the pro forma, but when, when will we know, when will the community know what number specifically of affordable units will be built into this development?
So, I mean, that was certainly something that came up at the last meeting. I think our intention was to have, to keep it as a line item so that we could have a conversation about the prioritization and, you know, and I think our, our goal would be to likely come with multiple options of ways that this is achieved, because as, as many have mentioned and Mike mentioned, there's a lot of ways to satisfy it, and we wanted to make sure that we were listening to the desired methodology from the neighborhood of whether that's, you know, additional onsite or a mixture of onsite and payments, whether it's a more of a focus on workforce housing or deeper levels of affordability, you know, there's, there's a lot of different methodologies. We wanna hear about what people's priorities are and come up with some options for people to, to vote on and make a decision, rather than if we put one version of it in the pro forma, people think that that's the version to kind of, yes, no, and we didn't wanna, you know, overstate the level to which we are committing to one particular way of doing that.
Okay, so that, when you say, I guess my concern was, well, there's many ways to meet it, writing a check and not having any onsite would be the way we're, the direction we're going in, I hope.
No, no, it's a matter of setting the, do you, are you looking for workforce housing? Do you set the AMI ceiling at 100% of AMI, at 80% of AMI, at 50% of AMI? What do you?
Yeah.
And there are different implications for the number of units and the cost to the developer.
In, in the process of, of this thing coming to the point where it, you know, can be decided, voted on, go before town meeting, when do you anticipate, Mike, that that piece of it would be fleshed out?
It really, we, as, as we've all said here, this is, is the first stage of an iterative process. We have to wait until there's a proposal that specifies how high, because that's how many units there are gonna be.
Yeah.
And when you get to that number, then you can say, well, this number's affordable.
I would assume it would be done, well, if we're bringing this to Maytown meeting next year.
Right.
It would be early in the winter, I would think.
That's correct. There's a lot of work to be done, and.
Yes.
You're looking at the, you're looking at the guy who's probably gonna have to do most of it.
Okay.
Up there, so he's.
My question.
He's got his sleeves rolled up.
Okay, let's, Meredith?
I, I was just also gonna add to that, so I think once we have a clearer idea about the direction that we're headed in, we wanna have at least one conversation with the Housing Advisory Board about their recommendations on an approach, and if they had a, a particular option that they felt best about.
Good. Right. Okay. Anything else? I think that.
Thank you for your time.
It wraps things up, and thank you for a presentation that was very interesting and informative and raises a lot of questions that, you know, we will have to deal with going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Orson Commission's, PCAC.
PCAC, okay.
Oh, PCAC first, is that the longer one, or then what?
That's the longer one.
Okay, I guess that's me. I set this up. Where are my notes? Okay, we have three issues with respect to the Police Commissioners Advisory Committee as indicated on the agenda. Question of amending the charge, the PCAC to reflect seven total members and removing staggered terms.
I'm trying to call you.
Yeah. Question of appointing three new members to the Police Commissioners Advisory Committee, and question of appointing a co-chair or, or chair to the PCAC. So what, what I propose, and I understand that there may be alternative proposals, with respect to the membership, we lost three members. Judy Fabricant, the chair, Karen Ambrose, a member, and Kristen Singleton. So we have three openings, but that assumes that we're going to continue to staff the committee at seven members. The charge just says five members, but in order to accommodate Judy Fabricant's concern that they didn't have enough staff to, or members to carry out all the work for the committee, we allowed her to add two additional members. We didn't change the charge, though, so, you know, one, one thing that I'm proposing is that we change the charge to allow the committee to have seven civilian residents as members. An additional issue is leadership. It's a very difficult job, and the two key members that we were looking to, to become chair, both, you know, felt that they did not have the time to do it, as do it by themselves. So I was able to sort of negotiate with them, and they agreed to serve as co-chairs of the committee. So that's, you know, that, that's that proposal. In terms of the members, I would like to propose, based on discussions with Judy Fabricant and Linda Roseman, the previous, or the initial chair of the committee, that we appoint John Hilliard for a term ending August 31st, 2027, Christine Knopf for a term ending August 31st, 2026, and John Figler for a term ending August 31st, 2025. Mike, you had another proposal?
Well, I had, I had some alternatives that I had sent to you. Do you want to, have you got them there?
I have them here, yes.
If you wouldn't mind, yeah.
Sure. Your first was John Hilliard, second Elizabeth Kernan, and third Karen Lashinsky.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, David?
I'm in agreement with the chair's suggestions, I just wanted to mention that. Those are actually the same three I had identified as well, taking notes, so.
Mike, do you wanna motivate your, your choices?
You mean, explain them?
Yeah, if you want to.
Well, first of all, we both, we, we all agree, it appears, or the three facilities agree on John Hilliard, so that's easy. I spoke at some length with Judy Fabricant, the, the former chair of the PCAC, and she talked about balance on the committee, they need to have balance. And I think the Elizabeth Kernan and Karen, is it Karen?
I believe so.
Yeah, Lashinsky. Bring. Yeah, Lashinsky bring the bring that balance to a greater extent than Christine and and Ms. Figler. I just, I listened very carefully to that. We had quite a nice and quite a long conversation. And that's the essential basis of my recommendation. If you remember, I believe Elizabeth Kernan in particular was a data, has a lot of experience with data analysis and data analysis is a very important part. The police department provides an incredibly detailed and and data-rich report. The trouble is that if you don't do some analysis of it, the data just lies there like a lump. Nobody actually understands what it means or asks questions based on the data. And I think that's critically important to be able to to look at that data and pull out the things that, you know, that really matter. And so that's the, those are the the reasons behind what I'm trying to do.
Yes.
I think I understand what you're saying, but I just want to be sure I heard it right. You you said I spoke to Judy Fabricant and then you proceeded to tell why you, you know, chose these two. But you're not saying that she.
No, 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 no. Oh, no.
Express a preference.
She didn't have a list of people at that point.
No.
I spoke, I talked to Judy a couple of months ago, when she first resigned. No, absolutely not. There's no endorsement on her part. This is totally my own. I thank you for clarifying that.
Any other discussion?
I just, I just had Bernard and I appreciate Mike's, Mike's input in making the case. Before I saw your note, I was, the three that you had mentioned in your note were the three that I had picked. Similar to maybe what David had said. So I'm inclined to go with with John, Christine and Joseph.
Hey, how do you want to do this? I mean, it seems that we have majority for for the.
Yeah, that, you know, I I never hesitate to vote no. And never hesitate to vote yes. So we we agree on John Hilliard. That's an easy one.
Yeah.
And if you want to put the the three names forward, let's take a vote.
Okay. Then I move to appoint to the openings on the, you know, first of all, why don't we make the amendment to the charge? So I propose that we amend the charge to give committee seven members and to fix what I consider a confusing language regarding staggered three-year terms. I mean, if they're staggered, they're not three-year terms. So. So the proposed language is to change five to seven wherever it appears. And then in the last sentence of the charge or paragraph three of the charge to to say voting members shall be appointed by the select board for three-year terms, picking out the word staggered. And then quorum will be four members. And wherever else we have five, put seven.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
David, Paul?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, why don't we just deal with the leadership question? Paul Yee and Ron Wilkinson as serving as co-chairs of the committee. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John?
May I ask you a question first?
Sure.
This does not preclude that they could revert to there being a single chair, does it?
No.
No, okay. All right. Aye.
Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, now let's get to the membership. So I guess I I can move the appointment of the three people that I suggested and we can vote on that, unless you want to do it some other way, Mike.
Well, if you did it one at a time, I would, I would not vote no. I don't think that's an appropriate thing to do. These are good people who you suggested, but I would abstain on the on Christine and on on.
Why don't we just move each one of them individually?
That's fine. Sure.
Respect to. How do we do this?
Yeah, just just move each one. Are we going to vote?
Yeah, that's easy.
So I move, starting out with John Hilliard on favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And David Perelman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, I would move Christine Knopf on favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
Michael Sandman? Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Do you want me to move one of your people?
No, no, go ahead. No, no, there's no point to that.
I move John Figler on.
Joseph Figler?
Joseph.
Joseph Figler.
There may be a John, but he's not on the slate.
Oh, okay.
I corrected that in yours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It was my mistake saying it. Go ahead.
I move Joseph Figler on favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Abstain.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And David Perelman?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mike, for, you know, taking the time to.
Sure. That's, that's what we get paid for.
Okay, the final item on our agenda is boards and commissioners reapportments. That in the audience, Harold Peterson? You came all the way out to this meeting for that?
Slammed on, Harold.
Well, thank you.
Good for you, Harold.
It's always great to see you. Okay, we're not at the end of the meeting yet.
Not yet.
Okay. 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 Question of appointing, reappointing individuals to various boards and commissions. Human Resources Board, Laurie Cawthorn, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Board of Assessors, Harold Peterson in the audience. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye?
Aye.
David Per, I'm sorry, Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
David Perelman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So you are reappointed.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a speech?
Okay.
I mean, you're such an important person on this committee as well as elsewhere in town since you're here, I think people would like to hear from you.
I've been on the Board of Assessor since 1990. And there's a time to retire, a time to leave. And I thought it was the time to leave when I did not seek reappointment in August of '23 when my last term expired. But since then, our chief assessor has retired and our deputy chief has retired. And I like being on the board. I enjoy it. So I believe I could be helpful in this period of transition and that's why I've asked for reappointment. Thank you.
We're extremely grateful for that.
Appreciate your service. Thank you so much.
Okay, that is almost, let me, that ends our formal session. So we'll have a public comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I live to leave South Brookline. I have to go to Hammond or Hammond Pond Parkway. As you probably know, Raj Dehander's project has taken many years and there's an extension, a barrier sticking out in one of the lanes. So we're all forced into one lane. It's it's been a nightmare. It really has. So as I was listening to this, I was wondering, I don't have an opinion, but wondering, especially where it's done in phases, is this going to be a forever? Graphic nightmare? That's really what I want to know because there's no other way for us to get out of South Brookline other than Hammond Street and Hammond Pond Parkway. So I just want to put that on your radar screen. That's point one.
Could you put that in writing and send to?
I'm sorry. Say it again, please.
Did you put that in writing and send it to Meredith Mooney?
It's in her minutes. It'll be in her minutes.
Just saying that, yeah, you want to bring it to her.
It's just a concern because it really is very difficult. And especially Hammond Street because now everybody in South Brookline brings their mail to the post office. And that's not accessible accessible any other street other than crossing Route nine at Hammond Street. It really has been awful. Okay. And the other point is in terms of the Preservation Commission, whether or not you have concerns about the you've been forced to think about whether or not the demolition delay of a year is going to be an issue legally. I just want to point out to you that if you don't hold the line on this, I don't know that there'll be any religious institution or proposal that will ever not use the same argument. So I do hope that you'll hold to the Preservation Commission's determination in the usual use of a year. Thank you.
Is there anyone else online who wishes to make a comment at this time? If so, please raise your hand using the raise the hand feature. And there is no one raising their hand at this time.
Okay, therefore I close the meeting. Thank you.
All righty.